Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the February 27, 2025 Barnstable Town Council meeting. In accordance with Mass Journal Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make your presence known. As you're aware, this meeting is being televised live via Xfinity Channel 8 or 1070, or also on High Definition Channel 1072, or may be accessed via the Government Access Channel Livestream Feed. When we get to public comment, please make sure that you sign in with your name and your village on the sign-in sheet there. Public comment is three minutes. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. I know several people are here for the public hearing on the Housing Production Plan. There will be an open meeting or a public meeting on that, so if you are going to comment, instead of commenting twice, if you could reserve your comments for that point, it would be appreciated. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councillors Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Levek.
Here.
Ludke.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Penn.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
We have 13.
Did you skip me? I'm devastated. For the record, I would just like to say that Councillor Burdick, Starr, and Penn are attending via Zoom, so as a result of that, all votes will be roll call votes tonight. Before we start the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd remain seated for just a moment, I believe Councillor Ludke will be introducing our veteran that will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, President Tamish. This evening, we have Lieutenant Colonel Patrick McNamara, an Eagle Scout. He comes from a family of military service. His father flew P-47s and P-51s in World War II. One brother served in the US Air Force, and two of his brothers served in the US Navy. Patrick enlisted in the Air National Guard in 1977, receiving an officer commission through the Air Guard Academy of Military Science in 1979. He served in many capacities with the Air Guard, including contracting, auditing, aircraft maintenance, personnel, and communications. He was a support officer and a detachment commander. Patrick received many commendations for his outstanding service and accomplishments, including the Louisiana Emergency Service Medal, the Massachusetts Desert Storm Medal, and the Massachusetts Medal of Merit. In 2005, Pat was awarded the Cape Cod and Islands Red Cross Heroes Mentor Role Model Award. That same year, he married the love of his life, Erica. Patrick and Erica live in Marstens Mills. They have two sons and three grandchildren. Although Patrick retired from the Air Guard in 2010 after 32 years of service, he immediately began working as a Quality Assurance Specialist in the Civil Service for the Air Force and the US Space Force at the Cape Cod Space Force Station, Sagamore, Mass., until 2021. Patrick's service continues to this day as a member of the US Coast Guard Auxiliary. Patrick owns a Cessna 172 aircraft and is an instrumentated pilot with more than 1,100 hours of pilot and command time. He is the District 1 Northern Region Auxiliary Aviation Coordination Officer. He has volunteered over 500 hours towards auxiliary flying missions and related activities. Patrick is also a member of the Civil Air Patrol Coastal Patrol Squadron 18 at Otis Air National Guard Base. Patrick's volunteerism is also demonstrated in his participation in the Otis Civilian Advisory Council, the Cape Cod Military Support Foundation, and the Boy Scouts of America. Let's welcome Lieutenant Colonel Patrick McNamara to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Thank you, Betty. I appreciate that nice bio-introduction.
You're welcome.
If everybody would place their hand over their heart, I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. Tonight, I would like to have you keep Donald Grissom in your thoughts. Donald was the council administrator for 12 years. He passed away about a month ago. Couple lines from his obituary. "His classy yet charmingly rumpled look consists of his wide corduroys, Brooks Brothers shirts, tweed sports jackets, and Burberry scarves." It also said that he was a free spirit. If you knew Donald, those two points are right on, and please keep him in your thoughts and all of your loved ones as we have a moment of silence. Okay, we are next going to have a check presentation for a number of recipients who have received our opioid funds, and I'd like to introduce Lynn Poiant, who will headline that for us.
Thank you very much, Lynn Poiant, Director of Communications. We are very happy to be here this evening as we present the checks for the second round of opioid grant from the abatement funds. I do want to point out that we have our co-chairs of our committee, Hyannis Fire Chief Peter Burke, Deputy Chief Jennifer Ellis here this evening, who will be part of this presentation. We also have Cheryl Powell, who is the Chair of the Human Services Committee, Chris Gennella, our Community Services Director, our Deputy Finance Director Gareth Markwell. Mark Milne is online, and Sarah Hearn, our Superintendent of Schools, are in the room tonight as we make these presentations. So the first part of this evening is going to be the check presentations for the newest recipients, and I'm going to ask Chief Burke to please come up. We are pleased, and actually, President Tamish, would you mind coming down? It seems appropriate that you be part of these check presentations. So we would like to bring up Stephanie Roten, the CEO for Duffy Health Center, Daniel Rodriguez, the Director of Substance Use Disorder and Outreach Program, and Jane Kokornak, the Senior Grants Officer. I have to say that Stephanie is brand-new on the job. The day that we announced that they would be receiving the recipient, that they were recipient, was her first day on the job. So, and it's a lot of Jane and Daniel's hard work that's made this happen, but we're very pleased to meet Stephanie and to have her here to receive this check. We would like to have a photo taken immediately following your receiving this, and if any one of you would like to say something afterwards, we'd be more than happy to have you say something. Or now.
Good evening, everyone. I am Stephanie Roten, the new CEO at Duffy Health Center. We thank you so much for this wonderful honor so that we can continue the work of our federally-qualified health center to deliver upon the mission and our values to ensure those who need it most have access to opioid treatment and substance use disorder treatment. We thank you for recognizing that we are part of the solution, and these funds will definitively help us to continue to deliver upon access to very needed care. And we would just like to have a moment so that Daniel and Jane can further expand upon why this funding is so important to us. Thank you so much.
And hello, good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Danny Rodriguez, Director of Substance Use and Outreach Programs. As always, it's a privilege and an honor to be here with you all tonight, and the importance of these funds, I just want to pause for a moment and really strengthen what Stephanie said. It is life-changing for the folks that we work with, and as folks know, the receipt of these funds are twofold for us. One, it is to serve some of our most marginalized community members through access to basic needs for folks who are unhoused in the Barnstable community, who work really closely with our Recovery Support Navigation Team, and really providing extra resources to those most complex cases to support them in their health and wellness journey. And then also, the second part is working with our youth and young adult programs, our Alternative Peer Group program, that we are very happy to be alongside Behavioral Health Innovators on, to create a really wonderful expressive arts and a digital storytelling program for all of the participants that come through that program, many of which are Barnstable residents. So, thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you so much for giving us the ability to do this really challenging work, and it's, again, a privilege and an honor to be here with you folks tonight. So, thank you.
David, do you want to conclude?
Thank you. Thank you. So if we can, I was going to say, if we can pose in front of the seal, that would be great. So for those of you that are coming next, please, no.
One, two, three. Awesome, thank you. You guys look great.
I saw you hiding. Yes, the chief can stay up if you'd like, and I apologize that I did not introduce that Assistant Town Attorney Allison Cagliano is also assisting us with these grant programs. So next, we would like to bring up Deputy Chief Jennifer Ellis, who will be making the check presentation to Dr. Kimmeed Walters, who is the Executive Director of Sharing Kindness. So, and I don't know if you want to say something beforehand.
Hi, good afternoon, sorry. Good evening, Kimmeed Walters from Sharing Kindness. We are so grateful for this funding. We will be doing peer grief groups for children and youth impacted by opioid use disorder. You may all already know this, but these children are at increased risk, they're at two-and-a-half times increased risk for suicide, they're less likely to graduate from high school, they're more likely to develop a substance use disorder themselves within five years of the death of a parent, they're more likely to enter the juvenile justice system. We are so pleased because this funding is going to let us work with your children and youth and Barnstable schools. We are already doing programming there. We love working with Mary Beth Taylor and her folks, and so thank you so very much for this opportunity.
Next, we'd like to bring up the Chair of the Human Services Committee, Cheryl Powell, and this next award is going to WellStrong and Alicia Conlin, the CEO, along with, Joya, why don't you come up? Joya Persoudi, who is the Development Director for WellStrong. And I should say that Duffy received $50,000, Sharing Kindness received $37,587, and WellStrong is receiving $45,240.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Alicia Conlin. I am the Executive Director at WellStrong, and we're extremely grateful for this opportunity. We've had the pleasure of collaborating with Duffy in the past, as well as Sharing Kindness, so it's so wonderful to see them up here as well. This money is going to be funding our Peer Support Navigators, which is an evidence-based program, and it's peer-led, so not only are we going to be assisting those who are struggling with substance use disorder, but we're going to be able to offer employment opportunities because to be able to participate, you have to be in recovery yourself. We do this at our Wellness Center already, located in East Falmouth, and it's extremely successful, so we're very excited to bring it here to Barnstable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, in November, the town provided an opportunity for organizations to apply for matching grants through the Massachusetts Rise Grant Program, and we have four recipients, each of $50,000, and we've asked them to come and provide an update to you, and well, I'll explain later. So first, we have the AIDS Support Group, we have Eliza Morrison, who is the Director of Harm Reduction Services, and Brad Badgley, the Senior Director of Harm Reduction and Sexual Health Services.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Lynn. Thanks for having us here tonight. I want to say first and foremost that so much of the work that we do as an organization could not be made possible without the wonderful assistance of our community partners like WellStrong and Duffy. We all work really closely together, and we're so grateful for their ongoing support. So, I'm Eliza, I'm the Director of Harm Reduction Services at the AIDS Support Group. This is my colleague, Brad Badgley, who is the Senior Director. So just a little background about our organization. We've served the Cape and Martha's Vineyard for over 40 years. We have two brick-and-mortar sites, one here in Hyannis and one in Provincetown, as well as two mobile units that serve the entirety of the Cape and also Martha's Vineyard. We provide cost-free harm reduction services, we provide overdose education and Narcan distribution, cost-free STI testing and linkage to care, post-overdose support programming, education, and outreach. We work largely with folks who are actively using substances and are at risk for overdose, but we also do a lot of work with folks who are accessing outpatient and recovery programs Cape-wide. So due to funding cuts at the state level, we've had to pull back a lot of our services, or a lot of our services have been threatened this year, so this funding is extremely, extremely helpful to our programming, and we're really grateful. So some of the ways that we have begun to utilize the funds that we've received from the town of Barnstable, we've been able to increase our training in the community, where we train potential bystanders to recognize and respond to a potential overdose using Narcan, and after those trainings, we do distribute Narcan to folks who would like to have that with them. We've also been able to train multiple large service organizations in the community who work with folks that are at risk for overdose. We've installed two nalox boxes at a local recovery center. We provide a comprehensive needs assessment with every participant that we engage with to assess which needs could create a referral or a warm handoff in the community, and we've been able to utilize some of the remediation funds to provide support to those folks, whether that looks like transportation to medical appointments, to treatment, to detox, accessing temporary housing, support for sober living, et cetera. So, yeah, so that's it. So that's what we've done so far, and we're looking forward to continuing to expand our services. We work a lot with businesses locally to distribute Narcan so that they can have that onsite as well. So we do a lot of training for local businesses and are looking forward, as the summer season starts to approach, to do a lot more outreach in the Hyannis area, especially Main Street, and some of the spots that we know are at higher risk for folks to potentially experience overdose in the community. So, yeah. Thank you, folks.
Next, from Behavioral Health Innovators, we have their Board Chair, Sheila House. Sheila?
Good evening, everybody. So we're almost 10 years old, our organization, and I've been involved in it for about nine years, and our two main programs are the APG program and the PASS program. The APG program is a six-month program, twice a week, for kids after school who are referred to us for substance use and mental health issues that are really interfering with their quality of life and, you know, their ability to thrive out there. And when kids first arrive, they are usually like this, the way kids can be, and after about three weeks, they don't want to leave. Part of it is the amazing staff, we have Duffy clinicians, who I've just never seen people who work so well with young people. And the kids, this model is so great because it was designed with input from people with lived experience, young people. Adults very often will create these wonderful, well-intentioned programs, but it kind of doesn't resonate for the kids, but this really does. So their peers are the ones that are helping them, you know, stay sober, stay clean, and sort of start to really look at why it is they started using, what triggers them to use, that kind of thing. And then there's a recovery coach and two clinicians also. And then the other program, PASS, which is, used to be called Positive Alternative to School Suspension, but now it's Positive Alternative to School Supports, is a newer program. So the kids will get, say, suspended, and instead of going home and spending the entire day at home in their room or something, they come to us, they very often get all caught up on their homework, because we have academic coaches there, they get a clinical eval right away, which often flags them for a substance abuse, substance challenge, you know, so they can go to the APG program. And it's usually five to seven days, which doesn't seem long, but we have sort of 100% feedback, positive feedback from all the kids that it was a very positive experience for them, it changed kind of their trajectory, and that they would recommend it to their friends, which is a huge endorsement on that part. So every time we have a board meeting, I look at, you know, how these programs are growing, and I'm just, we're so grateful that we have the support of all the communities on the Cape with these funds, and we can't do without you guys, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, from Hopeful Outreach of Cape Cod, we have their Board President, Patrick Downey, and Amanda Jacob, who's a co-founder and treasurer.
How's it going, everyone? My name's Patrick Downey, President of Hopeful Outreach of Cape Cod. We are officially a year old, and we are beyond grateful for the grant that you guys gave us. We have done more than we ever thought possible. We have given numerous scholarships to people directly out of detoxes, CCSs. We've worked closely with the hospital, we are boots on the ground. I myself have lived experience with substance use and mental health disorder, so I can connect with individuals on a deeper level that allows me to build this connection and show them hope, and give them the belief that there is recovery in the future. We work with the hospital, we provide clothing, we've been doing, working closely with soberhouses and doing long-term case management so they stay. So they're actually have a wraparound service, like amazing agencies that are here today that got grants, like it's, it's an amazing thing, and I just want to say thank you. And we're just going to keep doing what we're doing, meeting people on the streets, trying to get them, you know, into soberhouses, into detoxes. We've been providing transportation to them, you know, from here to Worcester, to anywhere that will take them. You know, we have recovery coaches, case management, peer support, and we just try to help, and we just want to end the, not end the epidemic, but make it less of a problem. And we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I've had a special request from our Town Council President that immediately following this last presentation, we're going to take a group shot of everyone, the current recipients and the past, or the past recipients up here for a picture. So our last group is Charles Passios, who is the Treasurer, and Pat Dutra, Board Member of Parents Supporting Parents. And I have to say that a lot of these groups that are here now, when we were doing our information finding, they were present, and they made sure that we got to the people that we needed to get to, so we're really grateful to them for their support as well.
Good evening. Just want to thank you all for the generous donation, the grant. Parents Supporting Parents meets on Monday evenings at 6:30 in Sandwich at the Senior Center. We also Zoom, and they saved my life in 2010. I didn't know what to do, there was nowhere to go, nobody on the Cape had resources at the time, other than Gosnold, and I've developed such a relationship with so many parents. We offer resources and we donate scholarships for $500 to anyone coming from rehab to a sober living facility. We do a potluck supper at Christmas time, and several of the recipients attend, and the grace in that room from the people who receive our help is unbelievable. And unfortunately, my child didn't make it, but I hope every day I help somebody else. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie Passios. I am Treasurer, as mentioned, thank you, Lynn, of PSP. To add a little bit to what Pat was just saying, we are 100% grassroots volunteer organization. We're all parents of kids suffering and those who haven't made it through. With that, Pat told you a little bit about PSP. It's been around for a long time, and my family, like Pat, had no resources on the Cape. PSP was there, starting out, brand-new. We discovered them, turned out it was the best resource you could have because you could go to a group and be yourself, and not worry about what you were saying or what your issue was. And to find people who are struggling as much as we were, that was a godsend. So it's done a lot for us, and our way of giving back is all of us that are involved are just trying to do the best we can giving back. As far as the grant goes, thank you. So in 2022, we had to suspend our program, which was just really getting going over maybe a year and a half with the scholarship grants for sober living. The need was so high, we just couldn't keep up, and we ran out of funds. Leap forward into spring of '23, our fundraising kicked back in, we were able to again move forward. Over that period of time, between 2022 and 2024, we had over 570 applications. We granted 275 scholarships during that period. The PSP grant activity that's been made possible by the abatement funds and the town grants, from the towns of, right now, for PSP, we have towns of Barnstable, Yarmouth, Mashpee-Bourne, and Falmouth. These grants have contributed to the strengthening of our scholarship program and augmented our grassroots fundraising programs. We're not giving up on the fundraising, we're still doing that, our Mother's Day auction, a little promotion, our Mother's Day auction is coming up this spring, so if you see it online, please participate, it goes to a good cause. Our grant program, so for Barnstable, in January, we're just starting out, like all the previous grantees that just were up here, we've had seven applications, seven have been approved. February, we've had eight applications, these are Barnstable residents. Five have been approved, three are pending review confirmations. So you might ask, what's the application process, or what's the review? The process requires various confirmations and follow-ups. Besides, per- Besides personal history, the most important inclusion is the contact information of the applicant's sober home manager, if they're already in, or going to, because they've already been introduced, or the recovery clinician from the facility that they're coming out of. The application review conversations with the professional contacts confirm progress in recovery and financial need. Further follow-up with the sober home, once settled or post-grant, in the case of somebody that's already in a sober home, allows us some insight into further need or a possible candidate for counseling help. So as our application said, we do the sober home grants for entry into sober living. We also are starting to work with certified peer specialists for counseling. And a lot of times, people coming out of treatment, people still have insurance that will cover some of their counseling. A lot of people come out with nothing. Went in with nothing, come out with nothing, don't have a home, put them in housing. They're still in recovery. It's still fresh. Treatment's not forever. Treatment needs to continue beyond the treatment centers. So we are working with peer counselors who have life experience. So as the gentleman before us could say, he can relate, these counselors can relate. And it helps in life counseling and all the above to get yourself back on your feet and back out there in the world of sober living. So that's pretty much our plan. We're going to continue. Sober living is our priority, as far as placing people in it, and the counseling is a follow-up. When funds are available, we will applying that from each one of the grants in those, you know, for residents of those towns. So, that's it. Again, I can't say enough about how this has been a shot in the arm for us. It's really kicked us in a high gear. We had a board meeting last night. There's a lot of brain matter going on and a lot of ideas coming. We're going to get this part of it right first and then move on from there. So, again, volunteer parents doing the best we can. Thank you very much.
So if we can ask everyone that's received either session of grants to please come up, I would ask the council to please stand at your seats. That way there you can be seen and not covered by people standing in front of you. I would also like the committee members, chief, deputy chief, Cheryl, Chris, superintendent Ahern, Allison, Gareth.
Better not get the big guy in front of you, right?
And while we're getting that in order, I know that there's a couple of people that need to leave for additional meetings, so I just want to say that our next round of grants, we'll be sending out a press release about this evening's event tomorrow, and we will be announcing that the next round of grants is a mini-grant series of $1,000 to $10,000. So I'm going to step out of the way.
Shouldn't you be stepping into the picture?
I think so.
All right. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you. Thank you. So I think that that basically is the end of this presentation, unless anyone has questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilors up? Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Again, I ask everyone to sign in if they would, with their name and their village. We've also received a number of letters regarding various subjects. Mary Elise regarding municipal trash pickup. Priscilla Jones regarding Main Street buildings and the housing production plan. Bruce Cole, the housing production plan. Fred Floyd, the housing production plan. David Kelly, the housing production plan. And Barry Nagel, the housing production plan. I would encourage everyone, if you're so inclined, to send us an email at council.town.barnstable MA.us, and those are distributed to all the counselors. And if you could identify yourself when you start speaking, please.
So I just, my name is Susan Truitt, and I'm from Osterville. But I just have to start by saying, what a remarkable experience it was to listen to this round of, I guess.
Susan, get closer to your microphone.
Remarkable experience to listen to what I just listened to with all of these wonderful volunteers and money that apparently the taxpayers were able to give to them. Not nearly enough. Our gratitude should be enormous to them, but also to the town for doing it. Anyway, came on a much different topic, but, so I'm really here because of the current situation for the town of facing the loss of funding for various projects. Mark Else has been, and his team, have been extraordinary in finding money to bring to the town. And we've already learned that, of course, both the state and the feds are going to be limiting things that we have built our hopes on, and that is going to cut a wide swath in what we thought we were able to do. So I think it's good that the town council recognize, early and often, that they have a responsibility to figure out how we're going to deal with it. It's not one of those, oh, that's not our purview. Oh, yes, it is. We want to be the ones who figure out how we're going to maneuver through this, and how we maneuver through it is going to be important to the public. We actually bring in $2.7 billion on the Cape of business every year. That business is in jeopardy if we can't provide the services and the attention that we have been able to do. Today, I learned, and I guess it's happened in the last couple of days, that three relatively new employees at the National Seashore, they're out. They're no federal money. They were fired at the federal level. Okay, we can't say, we don't have, that's to our big industry.
Ms. Truitt, 15 seconds.
Okay. So the point is, you guys have to figure out how to keep us guys informed, because I don't want to find out at the end what's happening. It's really important to let us know what's going on, what's happening, and we can go to our congresspeople, we can do whatever we want with it, but let us know.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Anyone else for public comment?
How you folks doing tonight? Eric Schwab, Hyannis. Probably watched the ZBA last night, and you saw a valiant effort to try to save West Main Street from gross commercialization. You know, the folks on that ZBA really tried very hard to protect our street from unwanted commercialization. And they did a really good job, but they had nothing to work with, nothing. And the reason they had nothing to work with is because the zoning on West Main Street is wrong. It's zoned as a highway business district, which we're just not. We're not Route 132. We're not Route 28. We're a neighborhood business district, and would like you to please change the zoning appropriately. We're still having trouble with commercial vehicle parking in our neighborhoods. Quite a few trucks are being cleaned up for the spring. I've got two rather large ones in my backyard. I sent around for comment a very simple proposal to update commercial parking ordinances in the town. It's ready for primetime. You just need to read it, put it on the agenda, and vote on it. And that will give the building commissioner something to work with. He's got nothing to work with. I mean, you cannot expect this man to work miracles for you. You need to give him the authorization to assist that commercial vehicles get pulled out of the neighborhoods, because, you know, he just can't do it with what he has. And you need to have a discussion with him about fines. You know, fines work. They may be difficult to collect from time to time, but for the most part, if you get a $100 fine, you're going to pay attention, whether you want to or not. But it's a way of getting people's attention and starting a conversation about cleaning up the neighborhoods. I mean, we're getting absolutely hammered. The other thing I noticed, and I don't know if any of you have taken a walk down Yarmouth Road recently, there's quite a bit of construction there, just take a little drive down. Some people are very thrilled about all the commercial construction going on, and I see Mr. Neri, his big smile on his face. You forgot one thing: trees. There are no trees on Yarmouth Road, not one. You can see through all those buildings, all the way down to Main Street, where you're building another enormous monstrosity. There are no trees. We have tree canopy regulations in Barnstable. They're just not being enforced. The other thing that's happening, it's kind of interesting, actually the largest deforester.
Mr. Schwab, your time is up.
Okay, I'm just going to finish up, if you don't mind. The DPW cuts more trees than private citizens. Okay? So, and every time I've called the DPW and said, you know, do you have a tree canopy replacement program for that acre that you just clear-cut? And the answer is no. They never have one. The town is not subject to the tree canopy ordinance, but, you know, they do work for you, so maybe you could have a little talk with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric, did you sign in? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm going to sign in first, so I don't forget. Hello. Is that loud enough? I'm Sato Douglas. I live in Hyannis, by the airport rotary. And I wanted to speak tonight about some of the disagreement, perhaps, over parking minimums in the zoning regulations. I moved to Hyannis relatively recently, because it's one of the only places on the Cape where you can live without a car. And I think that's a feature, not a bug, as the software developers say. You can have a car here, and you can live without a car. And I think that increasing density of housing development makes that option available for all of us. So I strongly support the existing zoning regulations as they stand on, in the ordinances, and any efforts from the council to encourage development. My main concern about parking minimums is the cost that those parking minimums bring to the cost of the housing units and the lost revenue to the town, right? The space allocated to a parking spot is space that is not taxed as square footage of a house, and that causes what is essentially wasted space. I would like to live in a town where people can choose whether they have a car or not. And in parts of Hyannis, that is possible, and that's why I live here, and in large parts of the town, that's not an option. So anything we can do to increase the density in small areas of all of Barnstable and allows people to live like that and be free of the car lifestyle. And if you haven't tried getting places without a car, I recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Catherine Finkenstaff from West Barnstable. I'm a layperson, so I had to make some notes for you guys this evening.
Excuse me, if you sign in first, I won't start your timer until you do.
I watched the recording from Tuesday night's meeting about the development on West Main Street and felt so moved to both apply for a position on one of the committees, as well as starting to have a voice, and what I feel is the overbuilding and lack of thought in the process that is happening here in Hyannis. I moved back here wanting the protections that wetlands, conservation, a small historical island and community affords us. I understand that change is inevitable, but change can be carefully thought out to help preserve a quality of life. This has been demonstrated already by several small communities throughout the US and even here on the Cape. Traffic is already at an all-time high, so development in turn affects roadway design and revision. West Main Street will be a building site forever. Then again, a lot of people will make a lot of money with the approval of all this construction. To find and see that building in abundance is happening at an alarming pace here is reason for concern, as there seems to be no foresight for the health of our island and its main source of economy. No one wants to visit a strip mall of a beach town on an island where everything is overpriced. We also need to work to protect and conserve what is, after all, an island with all its fragility. I came from a city that overbuilt. Sometimes entire blocks were under construction at the same time. Spec properties were built and sat abandoned, often taken over by squatters. Apartments were built that did not meet full occupancy and became more and more poorly maintained due to a lack of healthy income. The costs of living were too high, and more people were leaving that wanted to settle down. It's happening here. The cost of living has skyrocketed since I've moved here. As an example, use of $350 of electricity this month cost me $637 to be delivered. Property value, thus property taxes have more than doubled. Insurance costs keeping in step. Medical resources is scant. I'm sure we've all experienced, my next appointment is in May. And all of this on an eroding piece of land with high danger of flooding and dangerously close to eroding its ecosystem. West Main is not an area that should be added into corporate overbuilding to create a scattershot version of Route 22, a poor example of a highway business district. River View, as we all know, is building a massive facility that will already impact the area with construction, title, and traffic and infrastructure. Generally speaking, the infrastructure in place cannot keep up with all this building at the intended occupancy. The four additional buildings proposed at Wilkins Lane, in the first phase, only 70% occupancy currently has been reported, and there are four more of equal size to be built. There are two properties for additional housing already under agreement on Main Street with a total of 700 additional apartments that I know of, and I've only scratched the surface. We face a drought and water restrictions, with concerns about water table levels generally. There's certainly no comprehensive modern sewage system in place yet, and septic systems are not being replaced fast enough. Many leach out into ponds and waterways. We have seen more cytobacteria warnings in our water sources than ever before. Many roads are in disrepair, and yet we build for more people to come from where? Who can afford the price ticket of a $2,200 a month mortgage when, on average, most people work here for minimum wage and seasonally?
Please wrap it up.
There needs to be careful city planning to take into consideration the future, and right now, more importantly, the present, for those of us who live here and are dependent on the current infrastructure. And we look to our city officials to preserve our quality of life. If this is over tinkered with, those that have wanted that quality of life will leave for the many reasons I've mentioned. No one wants to feel they're living in a strip mall of a town that has murdered its soul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ella Sampou. I am a Precinct 11 voter. Yeah, absolutely. Ella Sampou, Precinct 11. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but the previous speaker, who I want to thank for her thoughtful comments, gave me some things to think about that I think are worth noting. Um... I say this regularly in front of you all, but the zoning on the west end of Hyannis is displayed around the peninsula as an excellent example of form-based code. Other towns are actively encouraged by our Cape Cod Commission to adopt similar zoning in an attempt to solve our housing crisis. While I understand the fear of unregulated development, towns do change and things get built and life progresses on. You know, stuff evolves over time. I am an ardent environmentalist, and I don't think that we have to pit affordable housing development against our natural resources. I absolutely agree. Yes, we need sewer ring. We need better control of our wastewater. But the beautiful thing about Hyannis is that it's already densely developed. We're, if we build up, you know, we're not cutting down trees. We're not cutting down, you know, forested, otherwise untouched land. Infill development is a really wonderful way to create space. And I also, I haven't heard this mentioned yet, but maybe that, I understand the anger about large developments being built in Hyannis, especially when those apartments aren't affordable. I certainly couldn't afford anything market rate over at Wilkins. So when the town, I want to encourage the town of Barnstable, when the town has the opportunity to purchase land that can be developed or redeveloped and then restrict all of that housing to year-round affordable occupancy, I absolutely encourage you all to do that. If we are afraid of developers coming in and building things at this unaffordable market rate, the town can move to acquire land and build those apartments so that year-round people can afford it. I also want to address the fear that by building, we're inviting people to come from somewhere else to be here. As always, roughly 50% of our workforce commutes from over the bridge. That causes traffic. That is bad for the planet. It erodes our sense of community. Our issue here is a space issue. Across the peninsula, such a large portion of our homes sit empty. We're not building apartments for people to come from somewhere else. It's an occupancy issue. We're building, the goal is to build homes for people who are already here, who are overcrowded into homes. We're building space for seniors who need to downsize. We are building space for women in their 30s who don't want to move back in with their parents, right? We're not, we're not making space for people to come from somewhere else, which also, you know, new blood is always good. But yeah, thank you. We're building space for people who are already here and struggling to get by. Thank you all.
Hello.
Could you sign in, please?
Hello to the people in the audience. I've spoken before, and I'm going to reiterate the same thing that I've spoken to.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Is this on?
Yes, it's on.
Turn it off.
Could you just identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you just give us your name?
Oh, Lisa. Lisa DeLuce. And I've spoken before, and I think all this building is just not good. And with the young lady who just spoke about the environment, you're supposed to be able to live within your environment, not take over the environment. I'm with her on no more knocking down trees. If you find a strip of land where there's no houses, build there. Don't cut down trees. I, for one, live on a dead-end street. There's a stream behind my house, and it's wooded across. It used to be old cranberry bogs, and they're thinking about putting housing up there. And I'm against it. I like the air. I like the breeze in the summer. I don't know about the rest of you, if you like to be hot. It's nice to sit outside and get a breath of fresh air. And when you take down the trees, you don't have that, and trees give you oxygen. They clean the air. They refresh your soul. Sit and listen to the birds. Enough with the building. Enough with the traffic. I mean, the traffic's insane. I don't even like to leave my house. Everywhere you go, there's traffic. And they're putting, and on my street, you've got, I live off of Stevens. On one end is Basset Lane. On the other end is North Street, already identified as two of the worst intersections in the town. And you want to put up more housing there? Unbelievable. Each and every one of you up here, think about what you're doing before you do. You can't undo what you do. Leave it. Move on. Find someplace else where you're not destroying land and inconvenience and people, they want to build across the land from me. I'll make it quick because I know my two minutes is almost up. I live on a dead-end street, and every car that comes down there is going to be in my window. So am I supposed to live with that? Hello, anybody? Anybody got anything to say about that? It's okay for maybe 60 cars coming down the road? Well, maybe not 60 at night, maybe 30, shining lights into my bedroom window all night long? Find a different place to put it. I'm not against building, just build somewhere else. And housing's putting up another big, or supposed to be putting up another big development right there on that same intersection that I'm talking about. What's that, 30 units? The car's there. It's already a deadly intersection, both sides. You can't get out that left, and you can't take a right without taking your life in your hands. And you want to add more to it?
Mr. DeLuce, it's time to wrap it up, please.
I'm sure it is, and I hope you guys wrap it up and do the right decision and stop building everywhere you think you can build because it's just not right.
Hey, any further public comment? Seeing none.
We do have someone on Zoom. We just have to wait for him to come over. One moment. We have Cliff Carroll on Zoom. Cliff, if you could unmute, you have three minutes.
Yes. Good evening, and thank you for the meeting. I would like to ask the Town Councilor, make a request, some growing concerns here. And I know I brought up the wind farm before, but there is a lot of cancellations of these projects taking place, and they're taking place left and right. In fact, today, South Coast Wind, the large project behind Nantucket, just announced that they are canceling their project at this time. Vineyard Wind has multiple contracts with the town or promises of funds, and it's gotten so deep with the town that we're hearing about the Vineyard Wind money being budgeted into our future budgets and our future plans and our future tax rates. Vineyard Wind has not been in front of the town to answer questions in almost a year now. They canceled three different meetings on the town in Nantucket. They actually canceled their meeting next week with the Commonwealth Water Department. I guess what my question is, is can the town please request that Vineyard Wind come in front of the Town Council so we could answer questions, especially concerning their finances? Essentially, they're a partner for millions and millions of dollars in pledged money that the town is banking on, and we may be partnered up here with a company that's not going to make it to the end. We may be scheduling sewer work and everything else that is based on them honoring their pledges. And the fact of the matter is, when you look at what's going on up and down the East Coast, these projects are being canceled every day. And if they do, what effect would that have on our taxes, Mr. Millen's projections? And I think it's time for them to come in front of the Town Council and answer questions. They did it in front of the Westport, Town of Westport, last week, and I think they're way overdue, and I think it's our responsibility to bring them in and answer the questions about financial viability, the pledges that they have, and the impact it could have in our town in the event that they fail, like all the other wind farms are failing right now. Thank you very much, and please have a nice evening.
Thank you.
There is no one else available on Zoom.
Okay. Anyone else in the public? Again, seeing none. We'll move on to council response to public comment. Any comment on my right, Council Letke?
Thank you, President Tamish. I wanted to just respond to something that Ella said. Ella, you quoted a statistic that's inaccurate. You said 50% of the workers are commuting over the bridge. That statistic came out of a report that was published by the Housing Assistance Corporation. And when the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities reached out to them to verify the data, they published an addendum. The addendum is available on the Housing Assistance Corporation. I give them great credit for putting the addendum on their website. If you look at it, you'll see the figure is between 27 and 28%. And the actually, the folks commuting off Cape to various areas, it says it in the report where they're going, is a low 30. So there's actually a little bit more going out. But look at Hack. Hack is an amazing resource, and they've done beautiful things. And again, I give them credit for publishing that addendum when they were questioned about that. But otherwise, you know, your remarks were very well taken. And Catherine, thank you. Beautifully said. I think your words really touched something for me. Everyone who spoke tonight, really good. We have, you know, the housing production plan coming up. We'll probably have more comments on that. So I really appreciate it. And then Susan, your words are also very well taken. It's time for us, as a town, to work extremely closely with our county government, with Senator Seer and our other representatives, to make sure that these gaps don't affect our ability as a seasonal community, as you put it, and perhaps in some other areas. So really smart for us to get in front of that. So thank you for those comments.
Thank you. Any further comment? Council Boone?
It's nice to see Lisa DeLuce come up to the microphone. I agree with everything the folks who are concerned about overbuilding, you know, stated. There's a lot of reasons, but the basic one, the bottom line is, in order to get a couple of houses or apartments of affordable or workforce nature, we have to build a lot of market rate housing. We don't need market rate housing. What we need is housing that our children can afford to live in. They cannot afford to live in market rate housing, to Ella's, they can't afford to live in market rate housing, is what Ella said. And I agree with her. We need to build affordable workforce housing. And we have to be, I think we need to be a little bit more concerned about, as Lisa was saying, plopping these monstrous things into neighborhoods. I know Lisa's neighborhood. She's, she's got a beautiful, it's acres. I don't know how many acres it is, Lisa, what, 12, something like that, you know? And, you know, we tried to get affordable housing there. It didn't work out. Now what's going to happen is her little neighborhood is going to be, you know, we were thinking maybe 10, 15 affordable apartments there. Now it's going to have something like 30 or 40 apartments with, you know, most of it market rate and a couple of affordables. So that's, you know, an example of something where we're just putting stuff, they shouldn't be going there. If we're going to be building, we need to be building housing for our children and not for market rate housing. That's what we need in this town. And so because of that, you know, every housing production plan I've seen, the way we do business here, it's just, you know, it just, it doesn't take that basic notion into account that we don't need market rate housing. We need affordable housing, period. So any housing plan or any zoning or anything like that that encourages more market rate housing, I'm against it. And I'll tell you, the citizens of Hyannis are tired of the density in Hyannis. And we are going to try to do something about that, you know? Barnstable has done its duty with housing. We have hundreds, if not thousands, of units that have gone up. We've done our dues, you know? Why don't some of the other towns, you know, do something for, to take us offline here? Because we're going to end up, we're going to end up being like, it's going to end up being like a Coney Island here. And it'll backfire. It'll be a horrible situation. Thank you.
Council Neri?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you all who spoke. You know, I've been out for a little bit, and everyone is passionate about how they feel things should be, right? We all are. We all have our opinions. And what really comes to light quickly when you're up here is you realize that many people have differing opinions, right? And it's really our job, I think, as a group, to understand both sides of the equation. And, you know, we're working to try to make, bring something together, make sensible plans. We have some committees working very, very hard on these topics. And, you know, we'll wind up somewhere in the middle. And not everyone will be happy. Hopefully, we'll all come to be comfortable with it. We've grown tremendously in the years that I've been here. The white picket fence, sandy beach, sandy roads thing has certainly gone by the wayside. I know, at least in my neighborhood, it has. And, you know, we're going to do our best to try to meet in the middle somewhere. As to Mr. Schwab, the reason why I was, had a little chuckle, I travel that road, oh my goodness, I don't know, four times a day. And I happened to be on a job, and I ran into an older gentleman, and I was shocked. He said, oh, you know, I noticed that you're up there on the council. So we got talking a little bit, and he said, you know, he said, there was a committee years ago that I was on. I chaired it. And they talked about redoing that intersection at Yarmouth Road and 132. And he said, a lot of thought went into that. He said, that was in 1970. So I look at the difficulty about driving around town. It's tough. I mean, there's construction everywhere, you know, inconvenience everywhere regarding it. And my chuckle was that I've been staring at that railroad intersection there by the old Came appliance going, man, oh, man, when is this thing going to end? You know? So, hey, you know, everybody's out there. We're working hard. I know DPW is working hard. Ironically, that whole intersection, anything on 28, anything on 132, we have no purview over anyways, right? That's all state stuff. But again, I just, I want to thank everybody for their comments. I know, again, things are personal on both sides, and I, for one, can affirm that as a group and as the town staff, we're all working to try to find a place in the middle that people will be happy with.
Council Turkelson. Ma'am, ma'am, public comment is closed, please. Ma'am? Public comment is closed. This is not a dialogue, ma'am. Ma'am, please.
Well, I was just going to say, that raises my property taxes. Thank you.
Council Turkelson.
Thank you, President Tamish.
Thank you, President Tamish. I do want to just comment on the concept of the Neighborhood Business District. You know, we've changed zoning, we changed the form-based code, you know, for development. I mean, when you realize that we could make West Main Street look like 132, it really seems like a real tragedy. So we're kind of at the cusp of that decision that the zoning allowed for Wendy's to come in. So I do support either the council working with planning on working on that. And if not, we do have a medical marijuana petition coming forward from residents and citizens. So that could be something that, again, I think we've heard a lot of comment here. We've heard it through the zoning, we've heard it at the LCP. We have the ability as a community, if you don't think we're doing, you know, right by you, to bring things forward. Hopefully, we've all heard what's been said, and our planning department is listening, and so that we can start to move that forward before it's too late, and we have 132 on West Main Street. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Penn?
Thank you, President Tamish. I just wanted to support Council Lutke's comments. That's what I was going to speak about, actually, and she said it. But my figures are a little different than that. But Ms. Sample, I just wanted to set the record straight, because the fact is that twice the amount of people who commute onto the Cape commute off Cape daily. And we, I think, once Hack was notified that the information that the Conquer Group had put out there, which says that 50% of our workforce commutes on Cape, they did retreat a little, but they didn't put as much effort into it as they did when they first made it. So the truth is that twice as many people commute off Cape as commute on Cape. And this includes online workers, because how this is measured, basically, is the source of a paycheck. So if your company is headquartered off Cape, Wareham, Boston, Minnesota, anywhere, West Coast, then you're commuting off Cape every day if you're working here. So I just wanted to set the record straight. So that's two for the same issue, because it's really important that we all understand that the reverse is not true. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comment on my left, Council Lutke?
Thank you, Mr. President. So thanks, everybody, for coming out today. To the gentleman, and I'm sorry I missed your name, who walks. I just want you to know, you're not a second-class citizen. Because a lot of times when we talk about parking restrictions and things of that nature, and I actually even mention to people, I go, you know, some people are going to live there, and they're actually not going to have a car. And it's like, what? And again, you know, it's, you know, I get the idea that, you know, as Hyannis is one of our villages, but it is one of the most, you know, urban places to live on Cape Cod. And as tough as that is, for, you know, again, it's not 1953, and it's a different place. And we should be talking about sidewalks, we should talk about bike paths, we should be talking about those things. And that's why you're here, and that's why you're nodding your heads. And a lot of the ideas of what's happened in the past, and I get it, you know, what, trees are important, and we have that in the form-based code, that's built in the form-based code, that that's required to plant those trees. That's, again, these are the hoops you need to jump with. Only thing Form-Based Code put in place was predictability. It took something that was undevelopable in a lot of different ways. Even if the town owned it and tried to do it ourselves, it would not be feasible to build. And the reason why Form-Based Code, in my opinion, was put in place, and I've said this a number of times, is to get property that is underutilized and not highest and best use utilized. You know, there's people talking about, we need, and it's funny, some people make this a big thing, like, you know, I have my real estate license, and I have my license with a commercial real estate office. And the reason why I do that, quite honestly, is for an education. My base salary for a town councilor is $8,000. And just for the record, I've never made more than $8,000 since I've, in the real estate market, since I've been a real estate agent in 2013. Let me just put that out there. So those reports you might see on social media that I'm some real estate magnet, it's not true. Okay? Just for the record. Another thing that's not true is that Dunkin' Donuts exists and has existed on West Main Street for some time. It's the same zoning that allowed the Wendy's to be in place. The thing that wasn't in place was the drive-through. And in 2018, I voted that drive-throughs would still have to go through a special permit process through the zoning board of appeals to get passed. It didn't pass. A land court judge reversed that decision. That's what happened. It wasn't the town, it wasn't this council, it wasn't a past council. That was put in place. And again, the Wendy's can exist because the Dunkin' Donuts exists, the Daily Paper can exist, the Star Market can exist. You know, so it's not, that's not the reason for the overbuilding, was the council zoning. It was a land court judge in Boston. So I know for some people on the social media, you need to make me out to be a Darth Vader, and that's your prerogative. But to say that, you know, the overdevelopment, or, again, you know, 307 Main Street, the Cascade Motor Lodge, the possibility of the Hibble Building down the street becoming something that looks, something historic once again, you know? And I understand the buildings will be taller than what exists there now, but there's buildings just as tall that have two stories, that will be just as tall, that have three and a half stories, and they'll house more people. And now, we do need to focus on, you know, we had such a problem with Cape Cod Healthcare, and them petitioning us, and Michael Loft writing us letters, and all these types of things happening, that, you know, that Hanover property, that provided 35 units of affordable units in the town of Barnstable. Where were we going to get that? And I understand it's 270 units, it's a big place, but it's built in a sandpit that was completely underutilized. And that market rate housing, I know managers of restaurants that live there. I think, I've heard figures, let's just say a large amount, maybe, you know, of people that initially were all Cape Cod healthcare workers, doctors that would not be able to work for our hospital. We're talking about shortage of getting doctor's appointments and things of that nature. Because Hanover was built, there's more appointments available for medical people to have treatment, because that was built. It provided a slot of housing in 35, I mean, I'm just going to say it again, 35 units of affordable housing that we weren't going to be able to create. And definitely, and we didn't have to spend taxpayer dollars to do it. So there's no perfect solution. I think, you know, Council LeNiri was kind of saying that. And when you've been at this for a little while, and there's a number of councils here, we've been at it for eight years, you know? And yes, not everything was perfect, but I do believe, I know for me, I've done the best I can, I really have. I know I've been mocked for saying that in the past, but you get all my effort, and I do my homework, and I try to do the best decision I could possibly do. And so if we want to go over zoning, no problem. I got, you know, let's look at it, you know? But changing the zoning, we'd have to say, there's no more Dunkin' Donuts on West Main Street to prevent that Wendy's to come into place. So, you know, and so it's the same type of thing. The drive-through was the problem, that it's allowed that, and again, it was turned over by land court. So, and I'm sure you can go on social media and read something that's untrue tomorrow. So, that being said, if anybody has any questions, please just feel, reach out to me. And sir, like I said, I didn't get your name, so if you could stick around, maybe during the break, I could give you my business card. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mendez?
Thank you, President Tamish. We constantly hear about housing shortages, we constantly hear about overpopulated. But one thing remains true, is that the continued urbanization of Hyannis has to stop. People in Hyannis deserve to have a quality of life. We all realize that we need workforce housing. We all realize there's a workforce housing shortage. But what good of it is it if the people that are currently here do not have a quality of a life? This town was incorporated in 1639, I believe. We're not graded for the population, for the amount of cars, and we never have been that we have now. If you, when I was a kid, I grew up in Marston's Mills, as I said 1,000 times, but when I was a kid, it took 10 minutes to drive from Marston's Mills to Hyannis. If you go out at 5:30, it takes 20 minutes to drive from Hyannis to Sunnerville. Hyannis at 5:30 every day is a parking lot. Hyannis at 12 o'clock every day is very busy. You get behind a school bus at 7 o'clock in the morning, you better add 15 to 20 minutes to your ride. In the summertime, there's traffic beyond the Rotary on West Main Street going down Stevens Street. It's not the thing that we don't want people to have housing. Of course we do. But it's a quality of life issue. It's a safety issue. People in Hyannis have bared the brunt of this housing stuff for far too long. And it's about time that the outer villages started to take some of this. Our kids in Hyannis deserve open space, just like every other kid. We deserve to be able to drive to work every day. My shop is in Falmouth, I drive from Falmouth to Hyannis three or four times a week. My mother's from Falmouth, my father's from Marston's Mills, but the Hyannis to Falmouth Drive used to be a half hour on the button. Depending on the time of day you leave, it's 40 to 50 minutes. That's what it takes. So I'm not the, we're a full crowd, but we are. Plain and simple. We cannot afford it anymore. You go out to that Rotary on West Main Street any time of the day. When I was a kid, you pull up to it, whip around, maybe one or two cars. 5 o'clock in the afternoon, buses are running, there's a string of cars, stream of cars down there. The urbanization of Hyannis has to stop. It's not, it's not, it's not for Hyannis to take all this housing. Plain and simple. We deserve quality of life in Hyannis also. So it's about time some of these outer villages started taking some of this housing. Just like I said about the Marston's Mills School, that's my neighborhood. That's the neighborhood I still have a home in. That's the neighborhood I grew up in. That neighborhood has changed 100 times over, and it's going to change again, because Hyannis cannot do it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Schnepp?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, and those of you who provided some lively debate. I just wanted to end on the note that we started on with the comment by Ms. Truitt about what is happening both on the state and national level, and our need to be ever vigilant. It's not always even just loss of funding, but we are in danger of losing critical partners in the work that we do, especially at the federal level. And so to the extent that we can keep ourselves apprised, the staff can keep us also apprised of where we're, upcoming deficits, I think it's important for us to organize and advocate on behalf of our town. We saw recently an effort that I think was very successful in getting the attention of the governor to not close the Pecassett Mental Health Center and to revisit that. So again, I think when we have knowledge, we can respond. And so I think it's really important for us to share among each other and invite staff to keep us continually apprised of anything that's on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Council LeNiri?
Thank you, President Tamish. Just one more quick follow-up. And just to respond to Cliff Carroll's comments about Vineyard Wind, I think that makes sense if we could maybe, you know, entice them to come and speak to us and the town, as well as some of the other organizations we haven't heard from in a while, which would be maybe Cape Cod Commissioner Christie Senatori, maybe get her down here?
Right, six.
Thank you. That's fantastic. And I don't know whether maybe some representatives of maybe Barnstable County, just to kind of get an idea what's happening in that sphere of things as well. So just a thought. Thank you very much, and good to hear about Cape Cod Commission president.
Okay. Thank you. Town Manager Communications is pre-recorded, it's available on video, on demand, and on the town website. There are several items there. There's a budget calendar update, a discussion about the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, say that one quick, voted to issue a temporary moratorium on review of applications for art projects within the district. Updates including the Cape Cod and Island Wastewater Trust Fund, discuss the draft 2025 Intended Use Plan and some of the changes that were proposed to that, which would have had significant impacts on our funding schedule for our comprehensive wastewater management program. Continued discussion and education regarding emergent contaminants in the water, the fact that the MOU with MIT had was signed as we authorized a few weeks ago. The Meals on Wheels has stopped the daily lunches that they had, or periodic lunches that they had at the Adult Community Center, and the Family Table Collaborative is picking up one meal a week there. So that's a big change for our seniors and their availability of food. DPW Communications Manager Kelly Colopy provided a video update on the Barnstable Water Resources and the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And Superintendent Sarah Ahern, who is here tonight, also gave a video update on her two items, if you'd like to see those. So I don't know if any of the councilors had any questions for the town manager or councillor?
Thank you, President Tamish. I was wondering if Town Manager Ellis might report on the meeting that he had today with other officials regarding the Intended Use Plan?
Good evening, Mark Ellis, Town Manager. Actually, the meeting today was about the environmental bond bill. And so how far do you want me to back up and then bring it forward? It's up to you.
Well, to the extent that people are looking at that for as possible funding resource, I figured that might be the connection.
So in my, in my Town Manager Communication, I've explained that annually, the Department of Environmental Protection State Revolving Fund Program, which we've talked about many times, that we're an active participant in, one of the primary sources certainly for us to receive funding relevant to our wastewater efforts, had issued their draft 2025 Intended Use Plan. And our Public Works Department, in its review, identified to us that they had put some draft changes in there that were brought to Mark Milne and my attention. They're of concern, because up until this year, they've obliga, there's always been a $50 million cap per community per year. But in discussions with communities, very, very public discussions, and with discussions with the Cape Cod and Islands Wastewater Trust Fund, the method of managing that was, if you had a $100 million project, then you would, they would commit to putting it over multiple years. And we were able to manage that. All the modeling Director Milne has done has always included that. Nothing new there. What was new in the draft was that they said, we can't obligate to that anymore. And we said, okay. They didn't say, no, we won't do it, we just can't obligate. Okay, well, that's a significant assumption change if you choose to adopt this. Would have been nice to have had that discussion prior to issuing a draft of this, which did not occur. So I called the Deputy Commissioner of DEP, who has been a regular communication for myself and Director Santos for decades, and he was unaware of it in the draft. So I knew that there was a communication problem here. So it went all the way up to the governor's office, and it came back down. And they reiterated that on March 3, we will be submitting written and oral testimony relevant to the draft IUP for 2025. And I expect that Cape Cod will have a very strong presence there. We've moved We've moved from Barnstable basically being the only community using the SRF to Cape Cod being one of the largest users in the Commonwealth. We're all aware of the wastewater efforts that are going on here. More to be told. I'll let you know as this evolves. Today's meeting was with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs as they are working with the administration to look at the preparation of an environmental bond bill. Now, I don't think there's been one done since 2018, and they're really a five-year authorization that then whatever gets put in the bill has to go to the legislature and then the governor, so it's not as though you put it in and you get it. There's multiple steps to ultimately releasing this money for use. But immediately, what we began, we being communities on the Cape, we've met with the Executive Board of the Cape and Islands Trust Fund, we've met with our, I've met with all of our delegation that represents Barnstable. And then speaking beyond that with various entities, whether it was the Cape Cod Commission, whether it was select people or town, I spoke with all the town managers at our monthly meeting about it, various select people from surrounding communities and beyond. So as many people as I've been, APCC, not only because of Andy Gottlieb's current role, but because of his historic role as a former commissioner in the state, and deputy, I think he was a deputy commissioner. But he's very knowledgeable in this and very helpful. So today's meeting, we asked that a $500 million earmark be put in the bond bill. And that is a significant ask. And it would be over five years, so $100 million a year, which would allow the State Revolving Fund to be able to have more capacity, to borrow more money, to satisfy the demand that's coming in from, actually, the Commonwealth, but much of it is from Cape Cod. So now it's a wait and see. The more immediate ask was not today, but it was discussed today because the undersecretary was there, and she was listening to all comments, not just about additional financial-type asks in a bond bill. She listened to the discussion and reiterated, "This is only a draft. It hasn't been adopted," and that perhaps good communication didn't occur leading into this. So we're asking right now that they adopt the 2025 IUP with the same assumptions that we've always gone forward with, and that we immediately begin discussions, as we always have, as we have for decades, with the various entities involved, to come up with a plan beyond that. Because the reality is that these are really expensive projects, and by Cape Cod trying to move forward with sewers, it's more money than they had anticipated. And that's real. So we're going to try to work with them on this. I don't know what the result of today's meeting will be, though.
Okay. A couple of follow-ups. I know the SRF has both state and historically federal funding. Are we at risk at all for losing any of that federal stream at some point in the future?
To be determined. I mean, I read the newspaper the same as you. We don't want to speculate. We're always conservative in what we do. So whether it be discussions with our school superintendent on what's going on at the federal level might impact education, or with Mark Milne, or with any of our people or our colleagues out there. We want to have real information and accurate information. We don't want to react. We want to respond intellectually, and that's why we're going to approach this. So you're asking me a question. I don't know any more than you know, and the people who are in the know don't know. I'm going on Thursday to Beacon Hill to meet about the bridges. And everybody acts like that money's been secured, but it hasn't been. So there are a lot of questions out there. So I think I would caution the council to certainly not provide information that we really don't know. On the other hand, as soon as we know, we should put it into whatever planning we're doing and proceed appropriately.
I just wanted to add one more comment. I've read your draft letter that you have in response to the IUP, which I think is great and whatever. But in case you hadn't had a chance to look at or the staff, the Unlocking Housing Production Commission, which was a report that had just been released on Friday, there's a couple recommendations that talk specifically about subsidizing private water and wastewater systems as a way to support increased housing production. And it would seem counterintuitive that the state would issue one document where they're supporting increased subsidy of wastewater infrastructure. At the same time, they might be making it a little bit more challenging. I know they're completely different documents.
Oh, no. That's a very good observation. Very good. I think one of the things that's most bothersome to me, and I shared it with the undersecretary today, is that for more than two decades, we've been talking about the need to go forward with looking at reducing nitrogen, whether it be searing or other methods, all of which are eligible under the SRF, not just sewers and treatment plants. But I said, so now, and they had a wonderful presentation today, I'll try to get it and share it with you if we can, PowerPoint, but in there, it didn't say wastewater or water resource protection. And so I said to them, "Given this proposed change you have, and given that we had many things up there, including housing as the priorities that might be considered in an environmental bond bill or other financing efforts, we can't just abandon what you've sat here for years, decades, working with us, committing to. We can't just change that." I mean, I guess you can if you have the authority to do it, but I hope you know that we're not just going to sit here quietly and allow that to occur. And so they acknowledged that. I think they have areas of infrastructure and, I'm trying to think what the other category was, just environment in general, that's what it was, that were priorities. But that's the first time I didn't see. So I'm afraid we've gone down this road, we've committed to these, and then this draft, I hope it's a mistake, or an oversight. And it isn't just, okay, everybody's gone down that path, now we've got to jump over here and shift the funding there. It's a wait and see. Yep, and I'll keep you briefed when I have accurate information.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everyone, it's in Kelly Colopy's update, but that starting Monday, March 3, the town of Barnstable's contractor will begin sewer construction on Shoe Flying Hill Road as part of the sewer expansion project, and the construction will occur Monday through Friday from approximately 7:00 in the morning to 4:00 p.m. So for more information, see the town's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Acceptance of the minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the February 6, 2025, meeting?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Councilors Bloom?
Yes.
Bardak?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Lutke?
Yes.
Mendy?
Abstain.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. We're now going to have a presentation from the Hyannis PFAS Community Working Group. I'd like to invite them up to the front. Counselor Lutke, are you going to introduce? They're going to introduce themselves. What would you like?
This evening, we have the pleasure to hear from the Hyannis PFAS Community Working Group. They, along with the town of Barnstable, were recipients of grants, and the grants were to study the PFAS emanating from two sources, one being the Fire Training Academy and the other being Gateway Airport. When the initial grants were given, the town was given the charge to look at the Fire Training Academy, and the group we have before us tonight was given the charge to look at the Gateway Airport. This group here has subsequently gotten further grants to look, I believe, at both sites. And we're going to hear what they've done with their, we had in the beginning, the grant money going out to the, or the opioid settlement money going out to the wonderful folks we heard from at the beginning of the meeting. And it's nice to see a group of citizens, they'll introduce themselves here, but it's fantastic to see just our average citizens getting together, accepting grant money, and then doing something incredible with it and helping us move forward with better understanding the PFAS pollution in Barnstable. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Young, and I'm the president of the Greater Hyannis Civic Association. I'm here tonight with members of the Hyannis PFAS Community Working Group, Rachel Youngling, Hyannis Parks Civic Association in Yarmouth, Chris Powicki, Sierra Club, Cape Cod and Islands Group, Linda Boliger, community liaison and a resident of Barnstable, along with Tom Cambrary, I'm sorry, I know your name. It's different to read it, our technical expert. The Hyannis PFAS Working Group was launched in 2023 to enable grassroots discussion, coordination, and collaboration focused on providing comprehensive understanding of PFAS contamination and accelerating site cleanup at the former Barnstable County Fire Training Academy and the Cape Cod Gateway Airport. So far, our working group has hosted public forums, received a 2023 to 2024 grant, tag grant from the Massachusetts DEP to study the airport by analyzing data and reports, taken part in technical meetings, issued technical memo addressing PFAS contamination downstream of the Maher Wells, which will be discussed tonight. We coordinated comments related to the airport's expansion plan. We created a trifold information brochure, which you should be seeing tonight in the presentation. And we have now been awarded the tag grant again for 2025, 2026, to address the airport and fire training academies. I'll now turn it over to Chris Powicki.
Hi, folks. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. On the screen now is an infographic that was produced as a publication, education tool using tag funds. And the tool was developed drawing on airport, county, Silent Spring, and community data, plus Tom's knowledge, to depict the history and the current state of PFAS contamination in the Hyannis area. Let's focus on the map first. As points of geographic reference, please find the runways and the town line between Barnstable and Yarmouth, just to orient yourselves. And then take a look at the locations marked by numbers within circles, starting with number one and the firefighting hats. These designate the county site, where municipal firefighters from across the Cape trained using PFAS-based firefighting foams, along with the two contaminated sites on airport property that are under state management but do not represent all areas where these toxic foams were used. Additional, as yet unattributed PFAS plumes are also shown. The PFAS plume emanating from the county site is brown, and the plumes from the airport are a light purple. Plumes marked with the number two circles flow down gradient with prevailing groundwater, and their estimated extent is designated by dashed lines. The down gradient municipal supply wells, shown using little red circles, tapped into contaminated groundwater flowing through our sole source aquifer. Drinking water containing high levels of PFAS was distributed to homes and businesses and discharged by septic systems and the Hyannis Wastewater Treatment Plant, creating many more plumes in the area marked with the number three circles. This continued until 2016 to 2021, when PFAS treatment was phased in at different wells. Treatment will continue indefinitely, ensuring that Hyannis area drinking water supplies are safe. But legacy contamination is widespread in groundwater and in ponds designated by water bodies outlined in red on the map. And as shown in the area marked with the number four circle, the commingled plumes from the county and the airport sites are converging on Mill Creek Marsh, located along the town line just north of Route 132 and flowing out into Lewis Bay. Some of the people in this room have elevated PFAS levels in their bloodstreams due to historical exposures to firefighting chemicals in the local drinking water supply. Other exposure pathways exist so long as groundwater and surface waters contain elevated levels of these forever chemicals. To control PFAS at the source, the county has removed contaminated soil and capped the former Fire Training Academy site. It operates a pump and treat system, and the county is also using a new permeable reactive barrier to prevent off-site migration of PFAS. The airport has capped its sites, but has no plans to remove soil or prevent legacy contamination from migrating offsite. So with that sort of history and context, Tom, it's your turn.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Tom Cambrary, hydrogeologist, also live in Precinct 4, close to West Main Street. I'm also concerned about a variety of things that you have talked about there, too. There is a building encyclopedia of knowledge, of information about PFAS issue here in Hyannis. You know, you had a major workshop months ago on this that went for hours with five different groups, and it's quite a large topic. Today, I just want to talk to you about two specific issues of community concern. The first is the remedial actions of the airport at its deployment area, which is a continuing source of PFAS. You know, on the screen, I've got a red circle kind of flashing where that is. And that is a monitoring well that I'll be talking about in the next slide. The second area, the results of samples in surface waters that are shown in the blue dots on the screen, that indicate a much larger area of impact than the airport has The deployment area was identified as a source of PFAS to groundwater upgrading of the Maher Wells. The contaminated soil beneath the deployment area was not removed or treated. The selected remedial action is an impermeable cap with an objective of stopping rainwater from infiltrating through the contaminated soil. The cap was installed in 2020, and with a condition to monitor it to show that it is performing as designed. This slide shows the results of the groundwater monitoring. The lines are concentrations of PFAS-6 and one of the legacy components of AFF, which is a form of where most of the PFAS comes from, the compound known as PFOS. There is a time scale on the bottom from 2017, when we first started beginning to understand PFAS, to 2024. The red vertical line is the date of the cap installation at the deployment area that occurred in September 2020. So, you know, an indication of the performance of the cap should be a quick reduction of PFAS that is sustained over a long period of time. The initial two points of PFAS-6 on the left long period of time. The initial two points of PFAS-6 on the left are at 1,200 nanograms per liter, and it decreases to 200 nanograms per liter and remains low for two additional sampling events to the end of 2021. Although it looks good, remember that the standard for PFAS-6 is 20 nanograms per liter, as shown on the graph that you see there. 20 nanograms per liter, and these are the concentrations that are shown from this well down gradient of the deployment area. Now, the airport is totally in a mindset that their PFAS contamination has nothing to do with the legacy PFAS-6 compounds, and that their signature compound is a fluorotellomer AFF derivative. However, folks, the fluorotellomer that they use as a signature is not regulated. So though it is good to understand it and document it, it really has no merit for the regulatory requirements and the performance monitoring for the cleanup. So I don't include it, okay? So the fluorotellomer is not on this graph. So after the decrease of the PFAS-6 concentration, it increases. The PFAS-6 concentration in 2024 is at 1,800 nanograms per liter, that high dot on the right of the screen. That is now higher than any previous measurement. Also shown in your orange is the PFAS-6 compound PFOS, which is a known legacy AFF component. It is also higher now than at any time in the past. So is the cap working? In my opinion, the performance data shows it is not achieving its design objective for PFAS-6. That means PFAS-6 will continue to migrate down to the Maher Wells, which will continue to require treatment. The airport says that these are just fluctuations due to the rising and falling water tables. However, research by the U.S. Geological Survey, the Joint Base Cape Cod, came out with a report that concludes that PFAS from these AFF training sites will continue to leach PFAS above regulatory limits for centuries. That's why they call them forever compounds. The next slide is I want to talk about the downgradient extent of PFAS-6 contamination from the airport. The airport is silent about its downgradient extent and says that its plume is contained by the Maher Wells. My work with the Hyannis Park Civic Association, that is in Yarmouth, across the town line, brings additional information into the picture that requires action and consideration. In April of 2024, I sampled several of these downgradient surface waters. As you recall, I showed in blue on the initial map, and also shown on this map here that is kind of washed out, but those are the data points and that were samples from surface waters were taken. DEP also did some similar sampling several months prior to my work, and they found PFAS-6 and the airport's signature compound, the fluorotellomer, together in several locations in the Mill Creek area. I expanded the area of sampling to an important location adjacent to the Maher Wells in the Mill Creek Marsh. The lab results are on the tables. On the table to the left shows the Mill Creek Marsh location is the first column, and in blue indicates a PFAS concentration of 379 nanograms per liter. In addition, the airport's signature telefluoramer has an extremely high concentration here at Mill Creek Marsh of 1,250 nanograms per liter. So where did that come from? Well, in 2018, the deployment area had a substantially high fluorotellomer concentration of 11,000 nanograms per liter. And given the groundwater flow rates in the area, it's totally reasonable for the high concentrations at the deployment area to migrate several thousand feet to distance to the Mill Creek Marsh. So PFAS-6 and the fluorotellomer are together at the source at high concentrations in the Mill Creek Marsh, indicating that they are likely from the same source. The other table on the bottom shows these results are similar to the DEP and Harvard researchers who took samples, indicating that our test results are not just various hits, but have been sustained over time in these water bodies. So we distilled this information into this technical memo that was sent to the airport and the county and the towns, DEP and EPA. In a public meeting last November, the airport, when we had that joint meeting, acknowledged that its plume was not fully captured by the Maher treatment systems and agreed to conduct some downgradient sampling. The airport's last report just came out this January, and it doesn't mention any additional downgrade sampling or the intent to do so. And that concludes my piece. I'll hand it over to Linda.
Thank you, Tom. I'm Linda Bolger, and we're going to be looking at the next steps for our group. Moving forward, our group will use its tag grants to continue with the activities that are highlighted on this slide. Most of it is community outreach through literature and meetings. The centerpiece is really the technical reviews of data being submitted to Mass DEP, and that's the work of Tom Cambrary. We're working in collaboration with organizations like Silent Spring, USGS, and others. And we will be adding a spotlight on PFOS blood testing because, of course, we're talking about a public health issue here. But our outstanding advocacy will be for the acceleration of comprehensive cleanup of the county and airport sites. So next steps, and what can the Barnstable Council, Town Council, do to help us? Urge the airport to sample for PFAS downstream of the Maher Wells. Urge the airport to commit to comprehensive onsite PFAS cleanup. Encourage longtime residents and workers to get PFAS blood tests. Publicize and attend BCFTA and airport meetings focused on site characterization and cleanup activities. And support and participate in the Hyannis PFAS Community Working Group activities. Any questions?
Yeah, I hope folks have some questions. I just find the body of work that you accomplished to be absolutely amazing. I am the liaison to the airport commission, and at their last meeting, they awarded their new contract to their new environmental on-call contractor. And the question was asked by the Yarmouth representative, when will this new well? Because Tom is correct. At that meeting in November, the airport did promise to put that well in. And Katie Service, the airport manager, said that that will be one of the first task orders that they put through. So it's important, and I think, and Tom, you mentioned, we had these working groups here. And I know that the airport relied on modeling for this, and the model is not exactly what the reality is with the testing. So it's always good, they say, trust but verify. And that's why I'm so impressed with the data. It's a lot to absorb. I'm probably more in tune with it because I was so involved in the Silent Spring, I too am full of PFAS. So it hits home for me. And I hope you continue. I hope we can have them back as they work towards this next grant. And it's something we really need to think about. And you can see, and I think Dan Santos is going to come and talk a little bit about what he did with his grant. And I think it's really positive that your next grant allows you to look at both sites. Because, Tom, your diagram of the plume shows it's all co-mingled. And the signatures that you described, if people haven't -- people probably haven't gone as many meetings as I have. When you go to the airport meetings and you go to the county meetings, you understand a lot of this language that Tom uses. And it's absolutely critical to get this data, analyze it, present it, and I think do a cleanup. And it's always been, the mantra has been, that the Maher Wells will solve all. They're not solving all, and you folks have shown that. And I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done on this tremendous presentation. I know, as Councilor Lutke mentioned, the PFAS blood testing that Silent Spring did. Where would one get blood testing now? What would the procedure be?
You can go to request through your doctor, and with the right code, you know, for the insurance company, they may pay for it. I have since, I was also partook in the Silent Spring test, my numbers came back very high, and I wanted to test them again. And my doctor didn't have the right code. So I didn't, I was denied that test. And that test cost about $350 from Quest. You can get it, apparently there are coupons, and you might bring it down by $100 when those coupons are available. But it's expensive for the everyday person. And it's a shame that we weren't able to get more people to partake in the test when it was free and, you know, through Silent Spring. But that's just the reality of people's busy lives, I think. But there is a group on Facebook, which is Hyannis residents, who are concerned about PFAS. And on there, I believe the insurance codes are there. You can look them up and find out the correct insurance code to use.
Thank you. Councilor Lutke?
Yeah, I've been talking about this letter that I want to just show to people or read little excerpts from. I've talked to Town Manager Ells about it, and because you asked the question, and Betsy answered it the way she did, you know, again, I knocked on so many doors, tried to get so many people to participate in that Silent Spring, but we missed people. And this is a letter I got from the Department of Veteran Affairs from Washington, D.C. It said, "Dear veteran, the Department of Veterans Affairs thanks you for your service and your sacrifice in the defense of our country. VA's mission is to serve American veterans. We are writing to you because you have been identified as having served at Karshi Khanabad Air Base." That's in Uzbekistan. "We would like to update you on VA research and services for K-2 veterans." And they provide in this letter, and I can give this to Town Manager Ells, they talk about a K-2 community forum, which is kind of what we're doing here, you know, getting information out to veterans. And then here's the bad paragraph. They said depleted uranium testing and toxic exposure screening because K-2 was built on a Soviet airbase that used it as a toxic waste dump. So it said that, you know, some K-2 veterans have voiced concerns about whether they may have been exposed to depleted uranium. But then there's a good part of the paragraph. It says, "The VA has done 128 K-2 urine assays, and all have been negative." But then it talks about the toxic exposure screen that you can do. And then it talks about somewhat similar to what Silent Spring did. I mean, this is a really good letter. I'm impressed with the Veterans Affairs. They found me, you know, they had to search all the orders and found me. They said they're actively engaged in assessing the health risks, which is exactly what Silent Spring did. And then at the end, they do the catch-all about the airborne hazards of open burn pits, which was also a K-2 feature. So, and I, what I think, what we tried to do when Silent Spring was here was send out a notification in the Hyannis -- well, now it's the Barnstable Water Board. There's Louise right there. We tried to send out a notification so we could catch these folks when Silent Spring was here and save some money and get their blood tested. But it was considered inappropriate, like we'd be endorsing it. But now that that's out of the picture, maybe we could do something like this letter I got from the VA, because all it is is information about facts. It's just information, and I could just throw it away, or I could do something with it. But maybe we could look at that, and certainly we'd have to have our legal staff look at it. But could we do that? That might help, just to let people know. And, you know, I'm not saying we're paying for the tests, but they'd have then something they could take to their doctors, and maybe we could work with Cape Cod Hospital on that. You know, I'm just focusing on the health of our residents right now. There's other subjects like the cleanup of the PFAS. But I was hoping, you know, President Tamish, we could maybe look at this as a town and send something out through our water system and just, you know, give people that extra nudge that they might want to talk to their doctors and have something there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on my right? Councilor, Vice President Clark?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. I think that Councilor Lutke is onto something. When you mentioned that there's information on Facebook, for those that aren't on Facebook and might not have access to that, I think we need to provide other avenues to provide this information, including the proper codes to bring to your insurance company and coupons, if they're out there, how to find them. But I think that if we can broaden the way we deliver this information to our Town of Barnstable residents, primarily the Hyannis community, I think that would do a public service for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment on my left? Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry, Charlie.
Hyannis takes another hit. Tom, if that place at the airport was cleaned up, would it take, I think I know the answer, but would it take a lot of load off of the mayor treatment center?
Yeah, if it was cleaned up, then the flow of PFAS could be halted. And there are some devices and strategies for doing that. The county is installing a technology right now to stop its flow of PFAS from its really highly contaminated site there. But if you stop the flow of contaminants, obviously, downgradient will get cleaner, and the load heading to the wells will be reduced.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your work, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, Craig?
I'm sorry. I apologize. Councilor Penn had a quick question if we could, maybe not so quick, but she has a question. I apologize to Councilor Penn.
That's all right. It's easy to forget people when you're online or on Zoom in the stratosphere here. I just want to tell everybody, everybody's quiet about this, but my PFAS number was 34, and I think that's really, really high. If nothing else, thank you, Mr. Cambrary, and everybody else for your information here, because it's a real damning report. And it seems to me that this, if not anything else, provides food for thought regarding the airport's future location, if we had our choices for those of us who live in Hyannis and have a number of 34. Getting into the medical community, it's just astounding to me how many doctors don't have information or a major awareness regarding PFAS. I have never, since I was diagnosed, I have never had anybody ask me, gee, did you have your blood tested? Or anything else? And that's kind of sad. That's a whole sector that could really use some information. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, thank you. I'd like to invite Dan Santos up, Director of the Department of Public Works, for his update.
Evening, councilors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. I was asked to give a brief update of the Technical Assistance Grant that was given to the town by the Department of Environmental Protection for this year 2024, 2025. And that's a $15,000 grant in this case, and we've gotten one previously. This was the second one, the second one that we've gotten. And this has kind of been a transition year for the county project. And I'd like to, well, I know it's partly because of our advocacy with the county. For many years, they had worked on this project, and it didn't go very quickly. And we And we pushed them. And this is how we used our grant previously. And then now with the LSP, we have now Jim Begley, who's been doing this for 40 years and worked for DEP previously. So he's got a very good reputation with DEP and in the industry. And we have worked with the county really to get them to be more aggressive with this. And they have a new administrator and I think things are going very well relative to getting them to move more quickly on this than they have over the past eight, eight or nine years. And so they hired a new consultant, a new consulting firm with much more capability than the previous firm. And so we're pleased with the pace now and the importance they seem to be giving to this issue and the dedication. So I feel good about that. And we've spent time with our consultant and DEP and the county to get them to this point. So in this case, the grant allows us to hire the licensed site professional or LSP. And the job of that individual is to advise the town and the community on the adequacy of the approach by the county and the actions, as well as to provide recommendations to the town for how we might proceed in addressing this issue with the county ourselves. So the intent is to provide technical information, review reports, provide us recommendations as to how we might either agree or disagree or make recommendations, and then ultimately to involve the community. And the way we do that, we haven't done it yet. We're planning this spring. We haven't set a date yet, but we're planning to have a meeting, a community meeting where we can share our opinion and thoughts on the county work to date, as well as get input and recommendations from community members in the council as to what you'd like to see done or what you think of what's been done so far. So that, that will culminate in the grant this spring as this, this community meeting. And I imagine that'll take place while we're thinking about it in the May timeframe. But we'll keep you informed about that. Some of the other activities that we've been doing is participating in monthly meetings with the Barnstable County and their consultant, as well as the Barnstable Airport. They have been very involved with both the town, Public Works, and our consultant, as well as the county, in working as a group and a team to make sure that we're addressing these issues adequately, all being overseen by the Department of Environmental Protection. Ultimately, they're the ones that have to bless any program that we have here and any of the proposals for remediation that we undertake. We're reviewing the county's immediate response action plans and status reports to interpret them for the town and make sure that they are consistent with the Massachusetts contingency plan, which is what drives all the cleanup activities. We participated in the public meeting that the, this group had in November and the joint meeting with the airport. And we will continue to participate in overseeing the county response activities and informing the public about these activities. I just thought I'd give you just a, just a brief on the county activities. And I would encourage, Mr. President, that we invite the county here and that they brief you on what they're doing. Because the activities at the Fire Training Academy have impacted the town of Barnstable. And so I believe it's appropriate for them to come in and have a meeting. You know, they have a public meetings as part of their public involvement plan. But I think it's appropriate they come to the town, town council and brief you all. And I can work to facilitate that if that's something you'd like to do.
Absolutely.
But just briefly, part of their recent efforts is they're starting to install, actually this week, installing new monitoring wells that are beyond the county property, down, between the county property and the airport and Yarmouth. And by doing that, they hope to delineate the extent of their plume. And that's one of, been one of our major concerns for a number of years, is they haven't done enough to figure out where this plume is. And that's much of what Mr. Cambrary has been trying to do, is to figure out where these plumes are today, not just looking at the source areas, but how far this material has gotten over the years. And so they're looking at the area between Mary Dun Pond and the airport well, that's our drinking water well, near the solar power field at the west end of Airport Way. That's not the town solar field, that's the private solar field that is located along Airport Way to the west of our solar field on private property. And also looking down gradient at the Mar Wells near Mill Creek, where there has been obviously significant public concern and you heard some of that tonight. Their consultant is planning to use an adaptive approach where they're going to collect data, analyze it, and then move forward and not wait and write a report. But they want to do this iterative approach, show that ultimately we get more information quicker, or they do, and then we ultimately do as well with additional monitoring well installation with the objective of really fully identifying the extent of this plume this year, '25. And we've been pushing for that. And I think that's, that's certainly a valid goal. The Barnstable Airport will also be installing additional monitoring wells. And they have a statement of work with their new consultant to do just that, as Counselor Lutke just mentioned. The airport's going to use this data to complete additional performance evaluations of their system, and in particular, the performance of their cap that was just talked about. And as part of the county's ongoing immediate response actions, they are proceeding with a full-scale permeable reactive barrier that was just discussed from Mr. Cambrary about how they're going to intercept the plume. And so that work is undergoing, we'll be reviewing that very closely and the design of that. In fact, our consultant has designed and installed these himself and, himself and other sites. So he's very familiar with the technology. And then, you know, the goal of that is to stop these high concentrations of PFAS, as you heard, from moving down gradient towards our drinking water wells or beyond, which is likely the case, as Mr. Cambrary also mentioned. I mentioned inviting the county and then finally we will be hosting a community meeting in the spring. So that's my brief update on what we've been doing with our tag grant. And happy to answer any questions or to continue to keep you informed as we move along.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Santos? Counselor Neary?
Thank you, President Tamish, and thank you, Dan, for your response. I know this is a very difficult concern, problem that kind of faces us. But just to kind of confront the elephant in the room here, has there ever been a pencil put to like, what kind of capital outlay it would take to, you know, dig a hole 200 feet deep and excavate this, this cap at the airport? Has that ever been done or a study or somebody has surmised a number or something like that on that? I'm sure it's gigantic.
They looked at that as an alternative. I don't have the details of that, but we can.
I'm curious. Yeah, I'm curious. I mean, it's a.
I don't think it would have to be that deep either, but I understand your point.
Yeah, center of the earth or something like that, right? So.
Yeah, there's a lot of issues around that. It's the, you know, the difficulty of doing it, the cost of doing it, where it goes, moving contamination from one place to another. There's lots of issues, but that could be, you know, we can share that.
I'm just curious. I mean, I'm sure it is a, you know, mind-boggling number, but in the public, I'm sure that that's a question that kind of lingers out there in space. You know, why don't they just dig it up, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's probably been bantered about at some point.
Well, the first thing I can do is get you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll just leave it at that. It's, it's, I'm sure it's a big number, but it, you know, even if it was, you know, throwing a dart at a board with a bunch, just.
Yeah. I can point you in the direction of the work they've done that considered that and you can at least have at that level. Sure.
Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. When we were at the MMA conference, there was a law firm, and I don't know how we got talking to this law firm, but they were representing towns, municipalities in a class action lawsuit against PFAS. And he was not familiar whether Barnstable was part of that. And I think the application date was maybe, Counselor Lutke, was at the end of December? I think it was December of this year. I'm just wondering if the town participated in that or knew about that. I know that we're seemingly ahead of the curve, so I would think we would have known about that.
Right. And we were ahead of the curve with that. We were one of the early additions to that lawsuit. We are involved. It's progressed very well. And I don't know how much I can say. Karen will knock me on the head if I say anything bad, but it looks like we will be getting a settlement as a result of our involvement in that class action lawsuit.
I'm just happy to hear that we're part of it. Thank you.
Counselor Boyle?
My blood test, the numbers were not quite as high as Felice's, but five, six, maybe points below hers, it's still pretty high. But I want to commend and thank the county for taking decisive action to clean up this I, I wish that the airport would follow their example. Thank you.
Counselor Lutke?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Dan had said. Again, I've been following this for quite a while. But the November meeting was very impressive. That new group that the county has, my goodness, what a breath of fresh air. They're aggressive, they're smart, they're targeted, they're on top of new technologies. Wow. So it goes to echo what Charlie said. They're really moving out and doing well. And as you mentioned, it's been a lot of years that they hadn't. I mean, the thought that they're finally getting to the air, I mean, they're so far behind the plume. It's absurd in terms of doing their monitoring. And it's really good. They were impressive group, really impressive. One of them reminded me of Dr. Shader, gave a whole presentation on the molecular construct. And it was, they're, they're good. They're real good. The county has finally landed in a good place on this.
Thank you. On my left, anyone? Thank you, Director Santos.
Thank you.
We will take 10 minutes and we will be back. Okay, we will resume. We were on communications from elected official boards, et cetera. I have several things. We received a response from Mass Development to our request for the study of a potential or the feasibility of a combined civilian military airport at Joint Base Cape Cod. They did respond. They said that they are still putting together their plan of hiring a consultant. They anticipate hiring a consultant during the second quarter of this year, and they will be back in touch with us, okay? Tomorrow at the ComFire at 10:00 a.m., Chief Byron Eldridge will be retiring after 40-odd years of service to the ComFire district, and Chief Patrick Hill and Deputy Chief Michael Rogers will be installed as the new command officers for the fire department, and they will be having a change of commands ceremony there if anyone is interested. For the councilors, you received a letter a couple of weeks ago regarding some ongoing training that's been provided to town staff and has been offered to the council and all committee members regarding harassment and discrimination training along those lines. The training is March 13th, 18th, and 19th. If you've not signed up, I would certainly encourage you to, and I would also encourage you to contact your committee chairmans for the committees that you're liaisoned to, to encourage them to sign up and have their members sign up. Any other communications? Anything on my right? Yes, sir. If you'd like to communicate.
I'd like to communicate if I could, President Tamish. Last weekend, if you have returnables, you know, it's been very cold, so everybody's got all those cans in their garage because they didn't want to go out because it was too cold to go out. The Centerville Civic Association is manning the transfer station, so please, bring your cans down. It'll raise some dough for the efforts that they put forth, so please keep that in mind. Get the cans out of your garages, okay? Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Councilor Neary. I hate to say it, but you're a day late and a dollar short on that.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It ends tomorrow for Centerville Civic Association.
Thank you. You've got to get down there tomorrow.
I don't know what the upcoming community group will be for March, but Centerville Civic Association ends tomorrow. The 28th, they go by the month, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Any other comment on my right? On my left? Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on. Orders of the day. Councilor Levek, would you read in 25070, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business, a public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full councils. It's item number 2025-070. Appropriation order in the amount of $40,025 for the purpose of purchasing pro shop merchandise for resale as written.
Second.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please? So, second, and we will need a roll call vote on that. Madam Clark?
Councilors, Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Luckey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Gennella, Director Gennella.
Good evening, President Tamish, members of Town Council. The golf operation has experienced an increase in both the level of merchandise sales from the pro shops and the cost to stock these items with inflation. Golf shop merchandise and equipment sales are significantly up over previous years, notably at Old Barnstable Fairgrounds Golf Course. The current budget cannot accommodate the increased level of the actual sales of the product. The appropriation is needed to fund the purchase of clothing, merchandise, and equipment for resale. This will ensure the golf shops are properly stocked with new merchandise for the upcoming season. Fiscal impact. Funding for this appropriation is being provided from the Golf Course Enterprise Fund reserves. Turf equipment that was recently sold at a surplus auction generated $40,025 in revenue, and we are requesting to repurpose those funds to make these purchases. The anticipated increased sales will also result in additional revenue exceeding what we had appropriated in our budget, thereby creating additional surplus in FY 2025. The Golf Course Enterprise Fund Reserve currently stands at over $2,300,000, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, could I have a motion? Zoom? Anyone Zoom? No. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved and seconded, Madam Clark.
Councilors, Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Luckey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Passes.
It passes.
Thank you.
Any council discussion? We start on my left this time? Any questions, comments? On my right? Seeing none? Okay. Madam Clark, a vote, please.
Councilors. Crowe.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Luckey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes, good luck with the season.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Schnep, would you read in 2025074, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of old business, requiring a public hearing and a majority vote. Item number 2025-074, resolve approving and adopting the Town of Barnstable 2025 Housing Production Plan dated May 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Okay.
Do we need to?
Okay.
Open a public.
We need to open a public hearing. I was just looking because the paperwork did not have that, but it does say public hearing. Okay, could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Madam Clark.
Councilors. Levek.
Yes.
Luckey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kupfer.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Kupfer, Director of Planning and Development, here to discuss the housing production plan that is before you this evening. The request here is the resolve before you approving and adopting the Town of Barnstable 2025 Housing Production Plan dated May 2, 2024. What I thought I would do this evening is go over what a housing production plan is, what it is not, go over the process that has taken place, and then kind of quickly go through the plan itself. I know it's been out there for quite some time, so I won't spend too much time on the contents of the plan. Happy to discuss, you know, any questions you may have at the end or, you know, any suggestions moving forward. So, what a housing production plan is. So, this derives from Mass General Law 40B. You know, several decades ago, the state declared that every town must pursue 10% affordable housing. So, every municipality was to set out a path to attempt to achieve 10% affordable housing. As we all know, not many towns have achieved that over the decades, but nevertheless, that law is in place, and there's ramifications for obviously not achieving that 10%. With that 10% affordable housing, the regulations that were developed for that recommended that every town develop out a housing production plan. I will say recommended, it's not required for a community to have a housing production plan, but there's several reasons why a housing production plan is beneficial for the community. Eighty-seven communities currently have an approved housing production plan. There is also a second designation, a certified housing production plan. Only 12 at this time have approved and certified, and I could talk about the difference in just a moment. Within that housing production plan, it's, the real rationale for the plan is to spell out in specific terms how you're going to meet that affordable housing goal of 10%. And that is key, affordable housing goal. And it's not a town's comprehensive housing plan, and I use that term specifically as well because we actually are actively working towards a more comprehensive plan for our community, which includes housing. And so that looks beyond just affordable housing to all the various things we've talked about this evening, the public has talked about this evening. So, the housing production plan itself is targeted towards how we're going to achieve our affordable housing goals, and it requires three specific sections in your housing production plan, and they're shown there. One is the housing needs assessment, so that's the data, the data portion of the plan, and that's primarily using the 2020 census. That's what's recommended through the state, the 2020 census. If everybody remembers, that didn't actually come out until 2023. So, when this initial draft was done, the consultants that were developing out the draft actually used ACS data, which is American Community Survey data, which is not as well-defined in the data sources and has a larger margin of error. So, since that time, we as staff have updated using the 2020, which came out in 2023, census. The second aspect beyond this, the data points, is your affordable housing goals and strategies. And those spell out, again, how the town is going to achieve their affordable housing goals, and what are the strategies we're going to utilize to achieve those goals. And then lastly is that plan, the action plan. How are we going to do it? What are the programs and strategies to meet those goals and strategies? Once developed that plan, it gets submitted to EOHLC, which is Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, our housing office there at the state. So, the planning board must approve, the town council must approve, and then it would go to the state for their review and approval. Now, if they approve that plan, we have an approved plan, and then we meet those goals that we've set out, those goals, some numerical goals, some that are statutorily in the law, the .5% and the 1%. If we meet some of those goals, we can have a certified plan, and that certified plan gives us a much, a safe harbor from comprehensive permits, 40Bs. So, that's one central carrot that the state hands out to you as a town if you've done, if you've taken these steps. So, when we started the development back in 2022 into 2023, we developed out that needs assessment, and as I mentioned, we updated it using the 2020 census. There was a survey that was done, and 315 responses, there was focus groups with respondents there, and two community workshops. The main themes that came out of those focus groups and workshops were probably not surprising to everyone here. Moderately priced and de-restricted affordable housing are hard to find, so that's supply, and I think you heard a lot of that tonight. Seasonal workers, young adults, and seniors are most in need of housing. We have a lot of constraints. Again, what you heard from Director Santos and others, we have wastewater constraints, we have quality of water constraints, and we have zoning barriers. There's opportunities for public-private partnerships that we could take advantage of, and there's opportunities to streamline permitting. So, in the plan itself, to achieve those first three, the needs assessment, the goal strategies, implementation plan, the needs assessment starts diving into the numbers. And so we developed out a number of demographics, you know, a number of households have And so, we developed out a number of demographics, you know, a number of households have decreased, total population has increased, proportion of adults over sixty have increased, and seven in ten residents live in one- or two-person households. This profile probably is not surprising. Eighty-four percent are single detached units, seventy-four percent homeownership, and our, as we're discussing our seasonal community, we're not quite at that state-designated seasonal community, because we're about quarter percent of our community is designated as seasonal. Affordability, obviously, it's too darn expensive. You know, these are prices back from twenty twenty-three, and I just added the line, it just continues to go up. So, eight hundred thousand, median price, is probably not surprising to most looking at the housing market today, unfortunately, and I would say that rent price is probably low for the given time today. Which means much of, many of us, depending on when you purchased your home, are cost burdened. Thirty-seven percent of all households are cost burden, meaning that your paycheck, thirty percent or more of that goes directly to paying off your home. Seventy-two percent of those are eighty percent, eighty percent LMI, and seventeen percent of all households are severely cost burdened, which is significantly higher than the thirty percent. Now, as I mentioned, the second section is developing out your goals and strategies. So, we start with our toolbox. What are some tools we can utilize to meet these goals and strategies? So, zoning obviously is one that has been discussed over and over again and can be done effectively to remove some barriers and create a more predictable permitting path and unlock, you know, development. Some zoning initiatives that took place over the last few years, the ADU ordinance, which you all are very familiar with, as we're coming back next week to further refine that now that the state has required it across the Commonwealth, and the downtown Hyannis zoning initiative, those are just numbers from February, but I would say, as a few counselors rightly pointed out this evening, that's total units and not, we're not strictly talking about affordable units. And so, in downtown Hyannis right now, the inclusionary zoning ordinance only requires ten percent, while some of the developments that have come through have provided higher affordable rates, not all, and I would say not many have provided more than the required ten percent. Other tools, we have subsidies and incentives. Our Affordable Housing Trust has pre-development and development subsidies and incentives. We have, we are an H-DIP community, our Housing Development Incentive Program, that's that tax exemption program, and we're a housing choice designated community, which opens us up to grants, some grants. We recently received a grant for a new sewer line because we're a housing choice community. Another tool, that's one of the town council philosophies, is utilizing municipal land. That can defray costs, and we can have a little bit more control as to what goes there and creating perhaps some stronger affordable rates on those properties. Three examples, House on the Hill, Marson's Mills, very close to coming to fruition, the Barnstable Adult Community Center Master Plan, which we've continued to discuss, and the Marson's Mills former school site, again, continuing to work through the process, I believe it's going to the Recreation Commission fairly soon here to discuss their priorities shortly. Goals. So, that next section talks about goals. So, we kind of, we now understand the needs that are outlined, we understand the tools that we kind of, we have, and now we outline our goals as a community. This one is the obvious one, that every housing production plan that you'll see across Commonwealth is going to include, because this is where the plan developed from, it came straight from the law, which says that each community must have, must develop out ten percent of year-round housing to be included on the subsidized housing inventory, which ultimately is that state list right here that says that these are the affordable units, and they count to meet the law. Right now, we're at seven point one five, that's recently been updated, as we've been meticulously adding the units that have been coming forward. That's still, while seven point one five might sound good, we're getting close to ten percent, we're still around seven hundred units shy, so that's a big number, so it's not quite as close as it may seem with that. Other goals besides just that ten percent is, you know, developing out as a key term, high quality of life for our residents, utilizing smart growth policies that protect natural resources by using, reusing vacant or underutilized properties, and stabilizing housing. So, that's not just new housing, but, you know, stabilizing others that may need it at risk of homelessness and others. Lastly, the third goal, enhance local capacity to implement these housing initiatives and strength, working with partners. There are many partners out there that we could be continuing with. The House on the Hill, for example, we're partnering with Habitat for Humanity. Strategies. So, we've developed out different strategies to meet the goals. Those are developed in three different buckets, planning policy and zoning strategies, local initiatives and programs, and then capacity, coordination, research, and education. I'll just quickly go through these, because I think all of you have heard these strategies over the last year or so. One of the strategies, tax exemptions for year-round rentals, really trying to incentivize year-round rentals, year-round deed restrictions, again, trying to limit the short-term rental aspects, especially of new development, and trying to get those year-round deed restrictions. One of the strategies in there talks about village-scale mixed use and missing middle. One of the, I'm going to highlight this, one is strengthen our inclusionary housing ordinance. Now, it's at ten percent. We talked about all those units that are coming online. It's ten percent affordable housing and sixty-five percent AMI for, by and large. Certainly could be an opportunity there. Targeting underutilized properties, as we've talked about, and coordinating that with our infrastructure. As I mentioned just a moment ago, identifying the concerns with short-term rentals and ways in which we can work to improve that scenario to, again, get more year-round rentals on the books and support our year-round housing stock. Our municipal properties, whether underutilized or vacant, working ways to develop out more balance to offer, to address the community needs. Some programs that we haven't really taken advantage of, that we could be taking advantage of potentially, direct assistance and housing rehab, rehab programs can work, I've seen them work, I've been part of them, and they certainly could do well here. Rental assistance potentially, you know, that could help with, you know, at risk for homelessness, again. Another one I want to highlight, the Regional Housing Services Office, so coordinating with partners. This is a tremendous opportunity to really dive into the details of our affordable housing stock and making sure that those that are identified as affordable are truly being served to those that truly need it and are meeting the intent of their original deed restrictions. So, this is a program that was piloted through the county and could be a great program for not just Barnstable, but Cape Cod. And there's other partners out there, major employers, I heard us talking about, you know, the hospital. There are certainly others that we could be partnering with. And lastly, diversifying our funding sources, continue utilizing CPA funding, that's by and large what we're using now, but establish potentially other consistent sources. That plan is shown on our town website and can be found right on the planning department's website after you hit that first button, or you come to the planning department, we have the plan update page, and this is where we've been and where we're headed. We had early, you know, twenty, as I mentioned, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is when this all started, then it went to the Housing Committee after the public comments period back in twenty twenty-four. They went to the planning board and went through several discussions with the planning board, and now tonight a town council. Doesn't have to stop here, we certainly could continue our conversation and our process, but ultimately, that next step would be at either this evening or at another time to come back to the council and then ultimately to the manager, which then gets forward to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
You want the public, since it's a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing. Is it? Oh, it is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, yeah.
Public, any public discussion? Okay, I'm back.
Good evening, Counselors. Bob Schulte from Centerville. First, I want to say that I'm speaking solely in my capacity as a private citizen, not as the member of any committee on which I sit or organization to which I belong. I want to thank Jim for his presentation, helping understand the HPP. I'm saying, speaking tonight to ask you to vote no on the approval of this plan. My wife and I attended the early meetings, participated in the surveys back in the twenty-two, twenty-three, and then didn't hear much about it at all for the last couple of years, and suddenly we're here before the council asking for a vote. I think it's already out of date, having sat on the shelf for almost a year. It also doesn't even consider the state's recently announced housing plan, the details of which I think are still not completely released. As such, I don't believe it accurately represents the true needs of our town. Within the plan, it refers to the need to follow the LCP, which is still under process. It also, I think there were recommendations made at one point that it should also consider the findings of the ad hoc housing committee, which also is still in process. Accordingly, I don't feel the HPP is ready for primetime and don't see the need to approve it tonight. I ask you to send it back for updating, and needs to be shared widely with the community before it's considered by this body for approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Good evening, President Tamish and the members of town council. Peter Hanson, local, from Osterville, local business owner and president of the Osterville Association. Thank you again for the presentation tonight. I'd like to first thank Bruce Cole, who's the vice president of the OVA, for his dedicated work composing a letter to the town council regarding the upcoming vote tonight on the Town of Barnstable's Local Comprehensive Plan and the Housing Production Plan. This letter outlines questions and concerns that the local citizens of Osterville have and what is being proposed. These comprehensive plans call for major changes in zoning and housing to adopt a community approach to housing that mimics the guidelines set by the Cape Cod Commission. This would apply a blanket approach that would strip the villagers of their own input. As I said at the last town council meeting, it should be up to the individual villagers to determine their own vision as to what the future should look like, and then to be able to steer it in that direction to accomplish their goals. The plan being presented tonight is not close to what the OVA members and citizens of Osterville have indicated that they want. We have said this over and over through multiple surveys, meetings, and letters to the town in all due respect. This plan is in no way ready to be voted on. We need more communication. What is a rush to approve this plan tonight? It's, I think it's flawed and it's incomplete, no disrespect. And also, where's the report on our limited water supply? No one is talking about that. And how many more new units can I have water system support? We urge the town council to table any votes regarding the proposed housing production plan until there is time for more public comments and transparency. Again, you owe that to the citizens of Barnstable. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Ms. Poyant, any Zoom comment? Okay. Mr.?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Nothing first?
Sure. No, go ahead.
Hi, Eric Schwab-Hyanis. This vote tonight isn't about whether or not Barnstable needs more housing. This vote is about the document and whether it adequately expresses our needs and our wants. How much housing do we need? How much can we afford? What's the most efficient way of buying the housing we need with the resources we have? None of this information is in the actual document, which unfortunately I've read three times. It's just not there. It's missing. I mentioned this to Jim's predecessor, Jim is not responsible for the contents of the document you're considering. I mentioned it to Director Jenkins when it first came out. I said, "Look, you're missing the numbers." You know, can I give you the numbers? Can we work together to add numbers?" He was not interested. That document has not been updated for two or three years. I mean, it lists Hyannis rents at fifteen hundred dollars a month in that document. I'm sorry, I can't quote you the page, I should be able to. That document needs Jim's loving touch. So, just give it back to the new director, let him fix it, and you won't have to listen to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn?
Yes, Cliff Carroll, you have three minutes, you may unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Am I actually online now?
You are.
Oh, okay. Thanks very much.
Cliff, could you move a little bit closer? You're a little bit faint.
Okay. There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Little bit better.
I would just like to comment in reference to this plan. I feel that a vote by the town council is absolutely premature for many, many reasons, one of which the LCP has not been completed yet, and I don't see how we're putting the cart before the horse here, or why we are. I think there's been a large amount of lack of public comment during this process. It was fairly active years ago, and then it kind of went silent, and now all of a sudden, it's back here in front of the council for a vote. I don't know what the rush is. Most of the data is out of date, it's a lot of twenty to twenty-three, and it's not just that it's a couple of years old, it's that incredible changes took place during the missing years of information, meaning the ADU units that have been approved by the state, the hundreds and hundreds of units that have recently been approved by the town. The ad hoc housing committee is incomplete, they haven't even been allowed to have their input here, and here we are about to vote on the finished product. I spoke about the ADUs and the hundreds of units. This plan basically mimics almost the Cape Cod Community College's, Cape Cod Commission's regional plan, and I just feel that it doesn't take into consideration the actual current status. There's been an incredible difference between the twenty twenty-three statistics and today's real deal market. And we just had quite a presentation on water resources. Part of a letter that was submitted at the last town meeting was a letter from the Barnstable Water Department stating that they're already borderline on their ability to pump water into these large projects. They're at capacity, and they're concerned about more coming online. I really think we're missing a lot of information here, and I think a large reason for that is the public has not been allowed to have their input into it. I appreciate Mr. Bloom and Mr. Mendez's passionate points about Hyannis and being overcrowded and overdeveloped. You know, we're basically a second-home area, and we have a lot of character left, but I heard a comment the other day, and it kind of rung a bell with me, but if we continue this way, someone said that we're basically creating a Brockton-by-the-Sea, which I think would be an absolute crime for an oceanfront town that has a lot of character and tons of history, and I really think, or would ask, that you do not vote on this evening, either that or deny it, due to its lack of incompleteness. And I just want to thank everybody, and Mr. Cufford, you're doing a great job, and I know you stepped in kind of halfway through this project, but it is incomplete, and I'm sure the town could do a much better report with more public input, not only from the Hyannis area, but the entire town. Thank you again for your time, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone further, Lynn?
There is no one further.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Okay. Discussion. Any discussion? Counselor Crow?
Thank you, President Tamish. I move to indefinitely postpone item 2025-074 and send it back to the Planning and Development Department until such a time that it becomes a housing plan with realistic strategies, not a general housing report. It is focused not on market rate housing, but on affordable and workforce housing that count toward the town's subsidized housing inventory. It contains goals and strategies for attaining and exceeding a level of 10% affordable units in perpetuity throughout the town. It includes an inventory of town-owned parcels located in housing-enabled zones to not include water protection, recreation, or open space. And finally, all data contained within it is current.
I second that motion. I see Town Attorney.
May I? A motion to indefinitely postpone kills the item. And if you want to send it back to a committee, you may want to restate your motion to do just that, to withdraw the item and send it back to a committee for review, as opposed to indefinitely postpone, which essentially kills it.
Would committee include the Planning and Development Department? It wouldn't be sent back to a committee, per se, would it?
Okay, that's what you're directing. The other option is you may want to withdraw this motion, Counselor Schnep.
Well, since this motion was put out without any discussion by the council, I was hoping to offer a friendlier amendment because I recognize from some of the conversation this evening and from other conversations is that the public doesn't feel like they've had enough opportunity to comment on the actual plan that was created. Even though there were opportunities along the way, the actual final document didn't have that. And I think it'd be more appropriate to allow us to continue this item with sufficient time that the document can go back to the Planning Department for whatever revisions and updates are required, that a public forum could be held, and public comment could be, you know, allowed, you know, sufficient time. And then it comes back to the council. And at that time, if we don't like the work product, we can vote to approve it or turn it down. I mean, I don't think that... I mean, I respect the council's opinions here. I understand, from my own review of the plan, that it may be more comprehensive than it is needed to be to address affordable housing issues. And I think that is what the housing production plan is supposed to be doing. The name, I think, is a little bit misleading because it's Housing Production Plan. Sounds like it's a comprehensive housing plan for the, you know, at all income levels. And it really is driven at trying to address the needs of a certain segment of our community, one that all of us have identified as hugely in need and that I think we would be shirking our responsibility if we didn't create some document that shows our priorities in addressing this need. So I would like to offer that we continue the item with some, you know, conditions and have it come back to us. And at that time, if there's certain... There are certain things in here that maybe address, you know, the village center... I mean, I'll just pull that one out as a zoning one that doesn't actually speak to affordable housing, but has been put in this particular plan. So that would be my recommendation at this point in time.
Okay. Counselor Crow, you have a motion on the floor. Are you amenable to withdrawing that motion and just going with that? Or what? You have a motion on the floor at this point?
I have a motion on the floor that says we're moving to indefinitely postpone item 2025-074 and send it back to the Planning and Development Department until such a time that, et cetera.
I don't think you can send it back. I think you can do the motion to indefinitely postpone. That essentially kills the item. You can certainly do that. I think, once you do that, I don't think you send it anywhere. I mean, I think staff will end up having to look at it again. That's the reality of it. But I think the motion is simply a motion to indefinitely postpone, and that motion kills the item. It's a way to vote no without actually voting no.
Well, the information I have is that to postpone indefinitely means to delay something without setting a date for when it will happen again. It's similar to canceling something, but without explicitly saying it's canceled.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's a way of voting no without voting no.
That's what she said.
Sometimes if the council doesn't want to actually take a no vote, indefinitely postponing it is essentially a no vote. So I guess the question is, what do you want to accomplish? If you want to send it back to staff, then what I would probably do, because you want it to come back in a different form, I would probably withdraw the item and direct staff to take another look at it. Or postpone it to a date certain, but then you're postponing this item. It comes back looking exactly the way it did.
Right, which is not what you want.
Which is not what you want.
So you're saying I should withdraw the motion and/or adjust the motion to that it says that we are asking it to go back to Planning Development?
I would, if that's what you want, I would make a motion to withdraw the item and direct that staff return at a future date with a reworked version. But I think the motion would be to withdraw the item so that when they come back, they can come back with something different.
Okay. I will withdraw the item.
You're making a motion to...
Make a motion to withdraw the motion. Is that what I'm saying?
You're making...
That's what I'm just saying. I withdraw the motion.
Right.
All right, you're withdrawing your original motion.
Your original motion. Your motion.
Okay, whoever seconded that, can you...
Second.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You're withdrawing, you're seconded.
Okay, good.
I second it.
Oh, you're withdrawing.
You're withdrawing, you're seconded.
I'm sorry. I withdraw the second.
So now, we still have the original motion on the floor. At which point, can someone make a motion to withdraw? Counselor Schnep, did you want to withdraw it?
I guess I need to have greater assurance that a withdrawal and instructions to staff gives us some assurance that this comes back.
I will make sure that it comes back. I will make sure it comes back.
Okay. And do we need to give any further instruction for additional public input in addition to the staff working? Do we want to make that a...
I certainly would.
I'm in uncharted territory here.
I think that it certainly has been made clear to Director Kupfer what the... what direction it needs to take before it comes back to the council. And I'm sure if he has any question on that, he would be more than happy to contact us.
Yeah, I just think withdrawing it allows it to come back in a different form.
Okay. Counselor Turkelson?
Thank you, President Tamish. Couldn't the motion be... Paula's motion to withdraw could include the bullet points that you'd like to include? And maybe any other things that Paula feels for her assurance? She could make a motion to withdraw the item with the provisions that you've written.
I'm not sure you can put all the conditions on a motion to withdraw. You're withdrawing it. Counselor Mendez?
If we withdraw the item...
I have to check if it's even debatable.
If we withdraw the item and no put a date certain for it to come back, that would give us time for the public to have their input. Because we didn't give it a date certain.
Right.
But if you postpone it to a date certain, then what you're doing is you're postponing this exact item.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, not...
And that's not what you want.
No, no, but not putting any date on it. That way, that way it goes back to Jim.
Right, so withdrawing it just pulls it from the agenda.
And then we can just bring it back up when we want, and the public will have plenty of time to comment or whatever.
I think that probably accomplishes what you're looking for. I think that's what I would recommend.
And again, I think Director Kupfer knows the direction we want to go in. So he's... I think he's...
Okay.
Director Kupfer, you're crystal clear on that, are you? He is. Okay.
All right. So I'll make a motion to withdraw this item.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Excuse me. I was going to get there.
Okay, so it's a motion to withdraw.
I have some questions here. I think the stipulations we put in this motion should be considered as part of a motion to move forward. Okay?
Do you want to take a break for a couple of minutes? I can figure out what the motion needs to look like to do what you want to do. I do think the cleanest thing would be to withdraw it. And then I think Jim has heard you.
The whole point is to give guidance to the Planning Department.
Do you want to take a few minutes to talk about what your expectation is before you make the motion to withdraw? So he can clearly hear it, as opposed to building it into the motion?
Well, I was just going to say...
I think I already made a motion.
Yeah, I mean...
You did.
Yeah.
We have the motion. And I think your points can certainly be transmitted to Director Kupfer because if it does not include those points when it comes back, we'll be in the same position we're in tonight. If those public hearing and the various issues have not been discussed, then I think we'd be in the same position we are tonight.
Well, and I'd like to remind everyone on the dais and in the public that this is a public document. And I think that we need to allow, you know, the public to have that communication back to us. And that we shouldn't presume to give directives to our Planning Department without the public's involvement. So, I mean, at the time it comes back to us, if we want to strike certain things or amplify or add, I think we always have that opportunity. But for one counselor now to assert certain conditions without debate among all of us, I think would be premature.
Yeah, I understand your point, Counselor. But it reminds me of the fact that this housing production plan really had very little of any public comment before it got to us.
I mean, we could agree to disagree on that. But I was at several meetings where this was discussed. I think if there was... I don't want to call this an error, but in order to try to bring in all the ideas that were brought at those meetings, whether it was through in person or public comments, you know, it became a very large plan. So...
Well, I understand there was public comment. There were two public comments on the regional strategy plan.
Counselor Crow? You're out of order at this point.
I can check whether the motion to withdraw is debatable.
Yeah, exactly.
Want me to check?
Please.
All right.
I don't want to get in an argument back and forth. I don't think you need to. I think it's much better to just withdraw it. And Jim certainly knows.
It is not debatable. The motion to withdraw, no. I think it's the cleanest way to do this.
Okay. Attorney Nobur, do you have a...
It is not debatable. So there's a motion to withdraw on the table.
Okay.
You should take that vote.
Counselor Mendez, Counselor Crow? The motion to withdraw is not debatable. So in other words, we either vote to withdraw or we vote not to withdraw. If you're in favor of it being withdrawn and sent back to, in effect, because it doesn't so state, in effect, sending it back to Planning and Development, then you would be in favor of this motion. If you want to continue this discussion, then you would vote against the motion to withdraw. Is that a fair representation? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Can you explain that real quick one more time?
A second. Counselor Schnep has made a motion to withdraw. Okay? So in effect, that would end it for tonight. And we would send it back to Planning and Development for further discussion and public discussion.
So a yes vote would be yes to do that?
Correct. And a no vote would be to continue this discussion on the current, on the original motion. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Counselors, Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Penn.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Turkelson.
Yes.
Bloom.
Yes.
Berdick.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Crow.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. The motion is withdrawn. Thank you. Moving on. I would like to, with the leave of the council, take two articles out of sequence, 25079 and 25084, so we can send the superintendent home early, perhaps. So is that amenable? Anyone have an objection? Okay. Counselor Mendez, could you read in 2025-079, please?
Certainly, Mr. President. This is new business, item number 2025-079. May be acted upon by a majority vote. Resolve authorizing the superintendent of schools to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for Barnstable Intermediate School.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Ms. Hearn?
Dr. Hearn, excuse me.
Good evening, and thank you so much. I do appreciate you taking this out of order. The two items on your agenda this evening are seeking authorization for a statement of interest on behalf of the Barnstable Public Schools to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. For those who may wish to understand a little bit more of the background, there were some recording remarks as part of the town manager's remarks earlier this evening. But basically, as part of the facilities' conditions assessment, we know that there are a number of things that need attending to, including some big-ticket items like roofs. And the Massachusetts School Building Authority has a program called Accelerated Repair. They open the window for applications every other year. And so there's a window right now that closes March 21st, by which we can apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for some reimbursement of capital that would be expended on two roofs. One of the items, as you had just noted in this particular motion, is for the Barnstable Intermediate School. The facilities' condition assessment estimated that roof project and replacement to be about $5 million. But in recent days, we've learned a little bit more about the structure of the roof, and that's probably low. And we would expect it to be more for the intermediate school. The Barnstable High School roof is a very large roof, lots of square footage. And in the capital program last year, you had kind of seen projecting out into future years about a $14 million bill to replace the Barnstable High School roof. And so the School Building Authority is an agency that recognizes that school departments and municipalities have some big-ticket items and some big prices for various repair projects. And they reimburse municipalities who are accepted into their program at a rate of about 40% to 50%. And so this statement of interest, these two statements of interest would be submitted. It does not obligate the town of Barnstable, and it does not obligate the Massachusetts School Building Authority at this point in time. It is us going on record and stating we have these needs, we have these deficiencies. These two projects are a priority. We have ongoing repair issues. We have ongoing leaks. Water management and moisture management is key in terms of maintaining healthy indoor air quality. These are projects that will need to be done. And so we're really trying to leverage all possible avenues for revenue and additional support. And this is an avenue to pursue with the MSBA.
Thank you. Any discussion on the council? Any questions? Seeing none? Seeing none, we are voting on 079. Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Neary?
Yes.
Penn? Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Sorry, Tamish.
Yes.
Tamish.
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Okay. Let's see, we will move on to 084. Counselor Crowe, could you read in 084, please?
Of course, thank you. This is an item of new business that may be acted upon by majority vote. It's item number 2025-084. Resolve authorizing the superintendent of schools to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for Barnstable High School.
Second.
Dr. Hearn, anything further?
I don't think I have anything further. Similar situation. This would be... You can put in multiple applications. I guess what I would just add is that this is what we would signal as our top priority of the two. They might accept both. If they only accepted one, we would hope that they would accept the top priority one. But that would be the only thing I'd have to add.
Okay. Any questions, Counselor Clark?
Thank you very much. Do you need letters of support for this?
No, there's a very formal process through a website that MSBA has, and we have to... there's very specific wording and all of that. Yep. Thanks.
Anything further? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Good luck on those.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Vice President Clark, 077, please?
Thank you very much, President Tamish. This is new business, may be acted upon with a majority vote. Agenda item 2025-077, authorizing the grant of an easement for gas facilities on town-owned land at 725 Main Street in Hyannis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. I recognize Attorney LaRosa.
Good evening, Counselors. Tom LaRosa, First Assistant Town Attorney. As part of the Department of Public Works Plan Sewer Expansion, they plan to construct a sewer pump station at 725 Main Street in Hyannis. As part of that work, the DPW needs to bring in a gas line which would power an emergency backup generator in case power goes out, electricity goes out in the area. National Grid would bring that gas line into the property. National Grid requires of its customers that they would grant an easement to National Grid before they agree to bring the gas service into the property. So this vote, we would be asking for the town council to grant that authorization to allow the town manager to grant an easement to National Grid. The easement area is approximately 2,278 square feet, so it's a small portion of the property.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? On my right, on my left, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, with the consent of the council, I would like to have a motion to move 2025-078 and 25082 to a public hearing on 36.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Counselor Turkelson? She's got something against the T's tonight. That's what it is. All right, I'll try to do better. Are you... Oh, Madam Clerk? I believe you skipped Counselor Turkelson in the last vote.
I'm sorry. Turkelson?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm totally confused. Where are we? 080, right? Okay. Vice President Clark, could you read in 080, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. President Tamish. This is new business which may be acted upon by majority vote. Agenda item 2025-080, authorization to expend a gift in the amount of $500 to the town of Barnstable Marina and Environmental Affairs Department.
Second. Okay.
Good evening.
I recognize Nina Coleman.
Thank you. Nina Coleman, I'm the Director of Natural Resources. The family, the Ganes, have graciously offered this contribution to our shellfish propagation program. These folks were involved with our shellfish by volunteering for many years, and they also were heavily involved with the bars, which is our local shellfish association, and we're here tonight to accept this gift.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Coleman? Counselor Turkelson?
I'm just curious how much stock we get for $500. Just out of curiosity.
So likely this wouldn't be used for stock. We do have a budget, and it comes from the general fund for our shellfish stock. I think the good use of this money would be for our shellfish outreach educational program that we've started this year, where we're trying to reach into our schools and teach our young folks how to shellfish.
Okay. Any further...
She's not done with me.
Counselor Turkelson?
I know nothing about shellfishing, so I'm learning. And do we have equipment for the school program that we have on hand that we use when we're teaching kids about shellfishing, or do volunteers bring their equipment?
Shellfishing equipment is something that we want to invest in as we move towards these outreach classes. Right now, we do quite a bit of learn-to-shellfish classes for both young folks, for kids and for adults, and they bring their own equipment. And really, the intent of this program is to bring it to kids that maybe don't have that opportunity and don't have that equipment. So we're starting to move in that direction of actually gaining that equipment so that we can share and get our young folks involved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sure, absolutely.
This is just totally off the subject, so...
Okay.
But this is the first I'm hearing about this program. You may want to reach out to the Wampanoag Tribe, because they can actually teach these kids how to shellfish without equipment.
Excellent.
So that might be something you may want to do, because that's how I learned to shellfish. So, just an idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Burdick?
Oh, poor Seth.
Yes, sorry.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Counselors. Burdick?
Yes.
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.